Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. Tonight's meeting has been advertised with... Tonight's meeting has been advertised for the new state sunshine law. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Halberson?
Here.
Mr. Langkri. Mr. Natale. Mr. Vidia. Mr. Ingber.
Here.
Mr. Gross?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Abstah.
Here. Uh, for the record, I see that Mr. Langkri and Mr. Arivita is not here tonight. So I'll be sitting with Mr. Mingber and Mr. Gross and Lou. Please let everyone to right to the flag. Let me introduce the flag to the United States of America. To the common people who stand as a nation under God in this world, for liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Nick. Just a couple of announcements before we start tonight's meeting. Uh, just wanted to say, uh, just two, a couple of points here. I just want to remind everybody that we have a very busy agenda tonight. And therefore, I will be following our initial rule that we have 45 minutes per application, 40 minutes an hour, and it will be at board discretion if we should continue it or close for the night. And then re-adjourn it, continue during the next month's hearing. Number two, we also have a rule that we have a four-minute rule. I want to remind everybody, please, when you come up to the podium and want to say something, please remember you have the four minutes to have to say your comments or ask your questions. And number three, I will only be here tonight until about 10:15, and I hope we'll look after as much as we can till at that hour. Uh, Madam Secretary, that's it for my announcements. Do you have any, um, correspondence? Or can I have a rule for the minutes from the first meeting? Hold on, I'm going to sit here. Can I have a second? Who's the second? Second, Mr. Gross. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Halberson?
Yes.
Mr. Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Ingber?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Abstah.
Yes. Madam Secretary, any correspondence in tonight's meeting?
Yes, I have a letter from Mr. Green. He is here.
Yes.
Uh, as you know, I have applied for a demo permit to take down my deck.
One second. Who is Mr. Green? Please step up.
As you know, I have applied for a demo permit to take down my deck, but before I do so, he required me to seal up the door leading to the deck. I would like to request permission to have a six-by-six foot landing in rent in any place with stairs leading down. This would allow me to get out from the back of my house since I don't have any other entrance or exit from the back of the house. Would you advertise? And it is a variance 20 feet required with a rear guard and only has 14 feet proposed.
For the deck?
This is one if you have a housing request, you should deny it.
Yeah, I remember that. I remember the... Mr. Green, would you raise your right hand, sir? You raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and hold it up?
I affirm, miss.
Now, you were here in, uh, last fall for an operating which was denied, is that correct?
Correct.
What's different tonight? What have you done differently? What are you asking the board to approve?
Well, I'm taking down, had to take down the deck. And I'm wanting to put it, right now, the deck was 20 by 12. And I just want to put it, since the door is there, uh, to remove the door instead, I just want to put a six, keep stairs going down and have a six-by-six landing.
And you've submitted, in support of your request, uh, I'm not sure that it's dated, but a, uh... Is that your handwriting?
My wife's.
All right. We're gonna let, uh, give me a favor, if you would. Would you come over here and turn the tools next to it? We're gonna label it A1, sir. All right? Very nice, uh, I don't want to say handwriting. Chairman? Yes? Just to make sure, you don't, uh, you write in your letter from that you have, I don't have any other entrance/exit from the back of the house on that floor, or you do have some basic details for the back?
No, no. I have sides. The house goes the long way. It's 50 by 150 watt. So it's a long house. It's a long house, so the back of the house doesn't have any entrance directly. There are windows, but no, no door.
No, even on the ground?
Correct. Only on the, on the sides further up.
Chair, are you okay? Well, how far now will the back deck be from the back of your block?
14 feet.
14 feet. And before, it was going to be eight feet, as I recall.
Correct.
Now, rather than eight feet, which was denied, now it's 14 feet, 20 feet required, isn't it? Right. Before, if I read the notes right, it was 20 feet, um, um, by 12. That's right. Right? So it was kind of 12 feet, now we've chopped it down to 6 feet. So it's only that little portion of 6 feet where, where it'll be, um, 40 feet from the, from the back. Now, upstairs coming from the second or the third floor? Where's the door?
The door is on, it's a bio level. It's on the second floor. I don't have a third floor. It's an unfinished attic, but there's no, there's no...
So how high is that floor? On the ground?
I don't know. Normal, the normal height of what a bio level is, I don't know.
How many, how many steps do you need? What, is it gonna be flush to the second floor? This landing that you're proposing?
No.
Or it's gonna have some steps going down?
No, we have a landing flush with a door and then steps going down to the back.
How many steps going from the deck, the landing going down to the floor, how many steps to the second floor? Can you round off?
I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I'm right there right now. Um, I would...
Let's try to figure out if it would have been with some sort of trees that would protect the neighborhood. Is that gonna cover?
The, the, the...
Way too high with the not gonna cover anything? It seems to avoid the second floor. It can be at least 10, 10...
Probably 10 feet. Probably 10...
Mr. Chairman, since you have a plan of three-story framing dish, so it's on the third floor.
No, no, no. No. The third, that third floor is just an unfinished attic. It's on the second floor.
On the second floor, so what is the third floor?
It's just an unfinished attic.
Mr. Chairman. I think at the time, though, we had a problem with not so much the deck, but the height. So that gives you a, a view to everybody in the neighborhood, both the backyard.
The neighborhood is, uh, the people, there are people living in the neighborhood who don't oppose it and they'll, and they'll be more than happy to speak back here.
Testimony at the... The testimony at the prior hearing, uh, Mr. Kelly, was that the deck, testimony at the prior hearing was that the deck is about 12 feet from the ground. 12 feet above the ground. Okay, that makes sense. And connects to the second floor of the three-story framing dish. Yes.
The steps could be a setback.
Right.
The problem is, you can't get out of the door without a landing to get the steps.
Yeah, so did you question that it's a six-by-six landing or five-by-five landing or six by three? Or four by four?
Please, I'm requesting six by six, because I have a lot of kids, a lot of family, you know, they want to be able to go out safely with them. My, my wife could take them all out without everybody, you know, pushing onto a low, small, little landing. I want to be able to have enough room just to make it easy just for my wife to kick it.
Mr. Green? So one of the people who testified at the last hearing was a fellow who lives a 23 Circle way. Where is that in relationship to your house?
Uh, that's behind me.
Because he testified, that was Mr. Neuston. He testified he'd be fine with it, as long as he put up R. V. V. along the common boundary line. And I think he had agreed that he would put up R. V. V.'s, uh, 10 to 12 feet height. Is that, is that right?
At the time, to, to maintain my full deck, I was willing to do that, yes.
Well, the next question is?
Well, he's not here right now, and I spoke with him about it, and I asked him if he wants to come, you know, to say that it's a problem because it's only six by six. He didn't, you know, he didn't seem to see that it was worthwhile coming. I spoke with him all week about it.
So are you not volunteering to put part of V. V. S. up along the common boundary line?
No, not right now.
Okay, let me go up the call. Let's see who's here from the neighborhood, and then we'll clear the hour just over here. So if anyone is here, I feel number 3972, please step up. Mr. Green? Please step up. Thank you, ma'am. Would you raise your right hand, lady? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole street?
I affirm.
Would you give us your full name and spell your last?
Yes, Hannah Bauman, B.A.U.M.A.N., 938 Woodland Drive. I'm a neighbor with Mr. and Mrs. Green.
What's the street number?
938 Woodland Drive. Okay. I am in favor of this, um, application tonight. I think that he's substantially, I think he's substantially downsizing his deck. He has nine children and a brand-new baby. I know the house. It's very long and narrow, and I think it would be...
We have a big crowd here tonight, and I would like to ask everyone to please remain from talking in the courtroom. And if you have to say something, please step outside. Thank you.
I think that he should be able to maintain that sliding door, and I think should he, should be able to have that six-by-six deck like it for fire safety. His wife has to take nine children out and herself. I would think on a little deck or just plain steps would be very difficult, especially when you get into a panic mode. So I am here in favor of this application.
Thank you.
Okay? I, I don't know. My son, who lives on Circle Place, another neighbor, I don't know if they're gonna get up, but they're here in favor of it as well.
Okay, let's hear it. Mr. Bauman, your first name again? Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole?
Affirm.
Could you give us your full name and spell your last?
Nathan Chopp, C.H.O.P.P. I live in 27 Circle Place, right next to 23 Circle Place where nobody lives. I don't know whoever told me that somebody lived in, nobody lives in 23 Circle Place. There is a legal issue in 27 Circle Place. The rab, I have 23 Circle Place, 23 Circle Place came in last year to complain, and we have no idea why. I live in 27 Circle Place, and I have absolutely no problem whatever he has going on over there. I can see everything perfectly, and it's perfectly fine with me.
We're in 27, we're in retrospect for this house, where is it? Right behind?
I look out my back door, and he's 15 feet away. My back one.
Thank you. Anyone else want to say something? Please step up. Mr. Brown, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole?
I affirm. The VAB and the literature by the election, they said that they have control over the zoning board. This application over here is the biggest evidence that they are correct. You take this little guy. There's a clock over there, 4 minutes.
Go ahead.
This is a little guy coming over here. And just was a simple deck that, you know, all the developers are getting these variances. They could build till the end of the property almost. And over here, the guy that is not connected to the VAB, he has no connection. You're making yourself, oh, we are a zoning board, we're tough. We're not going to let him. We made him take off an existing deck the previous time, and we're tough. But you'll all see, you remember, this application was denied by this zoning board for a deck that was already built, and they made him take it down. You'll see later, there will come a development, a direct development, that Manasseh Frankel is the applicant. Now, I'm just trying to bring it as an example. Over there, there's a R. 40 bringing it down to three zones, and you'll see that this board will approve it because this guy, Manasseh Frankel, is connected to the VAB. But this little guy coming over here just to build a stupid deck, what the zoning board should approve it, look how they're making themselves complicated. Previous time, they denied it. This time, they're just making maybe a little bit bigger, maybe a little bit smaller, and they want height and all that. By the developers, you don't even look at these type of problems. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Seeing now across the public. Okay. We have over here an application for a six-by-six deck, which is for stairs to go in down. I wasn't here during the last application, so I can comment on what happened last time, one way or the other. But if this is strictly for sets of stairs, just for a deck to go downstairs and to go up, uh, I don't think I have a big issue with it, even with this, with this application. And, and just for, like Mr. Bauman, very eloquently said it, with my kids and a fire hazard, they want to be able to get out, it needs to be a little bit bigger than a four-by-four to be able to maneuver and to get around. If I have any other comments from the board members, please say so. If not, I will ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve being that the neighbor did this, but they haven't actually...
I'm sorry. I think I could hear a little bit.
Being that the neighbors came and are in favor, I am making a motion to approve this application. Uh, with which, on six-by-six platform, with the steps going down.
I'll second that. Yeah, I just have one question. Do you want to put on some sort of screen, um, that, um, railing or even as a regular? Okay, really regular. Okay. Good. Madam Secretary, we have a motion to approve. Can I have a...
Just the line can be, you have to get a permit?
Yes, yes, yes. We need to get a permit. Yes, yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Halberson?
Yes.
Mr. Natale?
Yes.
Mr. Ingber? Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Abstah.
Yes. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward, we're gonna hear number, call number 4007.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 4024. Uh, this is the Morris.
Five James Street, lot 415, lot 60, R10 zone. Side yard setback, very empty, but a duplex. Terry Road, engineer Flannery, 101710. Property is located in the R10 single-family residential zone. With such dwellings permitted in the zone, party has no access to the property provided by the area. This lot is 12,000 square feet, 122 square feet. Advocate is requesting both tenants to leave for existing lot of 17 feet required. Side yard setback of seven and a quarter feet, where 10, 25 feet required.
Um, good evening. Who's here?
Ira Karas appearing on behalf of the applicant, Zethel Morris.
Your name again, sir? I'm sorry.
Ira Karas. I.R.A.K.A.R.A.S. As Fran indicated, applications for a duplex in the R10 zone, we're requesting a side, side yard setback variant. At this time, I'd like to have the applicant's engineers one of Brian Flannery.
Flannery, right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole street?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. I have two exhibits marked. A1 is the map that was submitted, which shows the property on James Street. It's a very unique piece of property. It's 50 feet wide on the front, and then widens out to 76 in the back. The duplex that's being proposed is in the wider, uh, part of the property. Uh, A2 is a, uh, a tax map exhibit showing where the property is with the zone lines drawn on the property. The zone line for this property, separating the HD6 and the R10 actually goes right through the property. So this is a, a split zone property. The relief that we're requesting, uh, is for a lot width, and it would be my testimony that with the duplex being setback as far as it is, although we don't meet the letter of the law in the lot width, we certainly meet the intent of the law. Uh, and, uh, with that aside, we're looking for side setbacks of seven and a half foot on, on the easterly side and six foot on the westerly side. Uh, the seven and a half foot is in conformance with the setbacks for the HD6, which is what the property sits in. So it's really the, uh, the setback on the other side. The applicant is proposing...
Excuse me. This is the property in HD6.
It's in a split zone. I, I have the, uh, A2, you can see that the zone line, uh, cuts off a small piece of the property.
Now, if you, if you point that, really, that's...
The blue, the blue line is the zone line, uh, and it goes up along the jog in the property. So the 26-foot section of...
Can I pass the question, please? Just, just for the record, I'm looking at, I have, um, map. Tax mapping, capital, late, stated, uh... Uh, is it your map? Is it your map?
Yes.
Okay. Um, these 79 markings, it was A2. So you, do you agree with me that two-thirds, three-quarters of this property is in the H, is in the R10?
Yes.
So we have a quarter that's not. Are we considering that a split zone?
Yes.
Thank you.
The, the liquid ordinance actually has a provision in it that says if you are in a split zone, which this clearly is, if, if the zone line goes along the property line or is away from your property line, you're squarely in one zone. This, there's no question it's in a split zone, and the ordinance actually has a provision that says you can use the less restrictive zone for 20 feet on the other side of it. We're not arguing about that because this is a duplex that's permitted in the R10 on 12,000 square foot lots. We have more than 12,000 square feet. Uh, what we're asking for is side setback relief to make a dwelling unit that's better for the...
Excuse me. I can't keep on, um, asking that one, but please refrain from talking. It's just gonna slow us down. I have a long agenda tonight. Thank you. Go ahead.
So we're, we're asking for side setback relief to make a dwelling that's wider, to provide more usable, uh, rooms for the future occupants of the, of the building. To the east of it, that property line adjoins the Family Planning Center, uh, and to the rear of it, it's property, as you can see, uh, buddy, that's also, it comes off the Route 9 and is developed more on the Route 9 frontage than on the James Street frontage. There is a duplex which is constructed to the west of it on James Street, so that this is a building that fits in, in that area. When we look at the relief that's requested going through RVV report, obviously, it indicates in one that duplexes are allowed in the R10 where you have 12,000 square feet. We have more than 12,000 square feet. Uh, bulk variance relief is requested for lot width, where 50 feet is required, and we have 50 at the front setback. We have 75 in the back where the property, where the duplex is gonna be situated. So my testimony is that we comply with the intent of that, although we don't meet the letter of the law. And then we get to the side setback situation, um, where the ordinance for the R10 requires 10 and 25, and we're asking for the seven and a half and six in order to, um, have, have rooms that are larger. If the board has problems with, uh, the width of it, the applicant will, will reduce the width, whatever the board says we need to, in, in order to, uh, provide what, what the board feels is appropriate. Uh, under the review comments, uh, it's basically that we're gonna need to submit a plot plan if the board acts favorably, uh, and, uh, discussion on the architectural design. It's a pretty straightforward type of duplex, typical of duplexes in the area. Uh, looking to the master plan, uh, for justification on, on granting the variances because this is a use variance, uh, we need to show that there's special reasons. The, uh, master plan of 2007 on page 35 under Housing indicates the need for housing that's there, uh, and, and the conclusion of it is that not all the housing needs are met. Uh, on page 56, it says, "Encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles." And this certainly is redevelopment. It's a needed development, redevelopment, and it is based on smart growth. We're at the transition from the HD6 zone to the R10 zone. Uh, I'm sure the board is very familiar with that side of the street. There are a few residences on it. James Street is a county road. It's a very busy road. That's why the, the building is being set back that far, to provide the, the setback and to provide nice housing opportunity setback. Further to the west is the large township-owned open space lot, which has wetland and stream carter implications, so that open space will remain there. And there is a stream carter which goes behind the Family Planning Center in the back and, and also the new duplexes that were built off of Route 9. It's, it's a property that fits well, uh, and it complies with the master plan, the municipal land use law, NJAC 40,55 D2, under the purposes of the Act. A is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in a state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And it's my testimony that this does promote the general welfare for the reasons I've indicated from the, uh, master plan. And E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, regions, and preservation of the environment. And this does, uh, the, the, clearly, the population density on a 12,000 square foot lot in the R10, especially in a, in a split zone, on the R10 it complies. In a split zone, it, it complies that much further. Uh, and the municipal land use law, uh, also requires that the board find that the relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And since the area complies with the zoning ordinance, since the, that building fits in well, since it's setback where it's not something that's gonna be right out there, since it is on a county road, for all those reasons, it's my testimony that the board can make that plan.
Okay.
May I add a couple of questions?
Go ahead.
Flannery, as both sides of this group, a lot improved. What is it, the Family Center, Family Living Center on one side?
Uh, the, uh, other side, there's a, a pizza, pizza, I think it's still pizza. It's a combined retail and residential. The upstairs is an apartment. Yes, yes.
My point is, no problem to acquire.
That, that is correct.
And what's the rectangular vacant lot in the back? What is that? Right behind this property?
Right behind it, it's a property that has, uh, that's actually, I believe, the Family Planning Center. It has frontage on Route 9. There's a, a medical office, the Family Planning Center on it now, and then the back part of it is environmentally impacted.
Is that wood? Are you sure? I think it's not, that's just after that, that, that hasn't developed.
But we're, we're looking at...
Yeah, isn't that woods?
Uh, lot. The back part of it is woods. Uh, it's a two-acre site. Only the front part of it is developed.
And what's on the corner, then? The corner lot?
That's a bodega, uh, or some store. It's not a restaurant. It's a small restaurant.
Is it improved? I guess that's my question. I guess...
Well, there's, there's two lots to the east of it, 14 and 15. 14 is the pizza with the, make sure I get it right now. 15 is the, uh... The, the pizza with the, um, residents above. Uh, and 14, I, I don't recall if there's anything built there.
So, let me try again. On the lot to the west of this site, is there improvement on that lot? To the west?
Oh, to the west, 17. There's a duplex to the west.
And then to the east, on one of the lots, it's improved?
Yes.
And the other lot is vacant?
Correct.
And are there other duplexes on this, on James Street in this general area?
Yes, there are.
Can you point out where they are?
Uh, I, I know that there's, uh, several of them on the north side.
Your able system is pointing on all of the lots there on that side of James Street?
There's like five lots there. Three of them are duplexes. And on the south side, there, there's also duplexes and duplex approval.
Thank you.
Chair, you...
I'm sure, thank you, Chair.
Okay. I just have a couple of quick questions, okay? Um, to start, to start the discussion, for argument's sake, I would grant you that, you correct that it's, we're doing a 75 frontage. Okay? Yeah, there's a little piece of wood, 50, and that's where the variance is here. So for argument's sake, I'll accept your, your... So for argument's sake, I'll accept your, your, your testimony to say that you're building a duplex at the 75 with area, therefore it should work, right? Now, if that's the case, using your logic, the judge also says that in that, in that case, um, we should have 25 feet combined. Why can't we have 25 feet combined?
Well, we can, but that part of it, it, it's a matter of the benefits outweighing the detriment. Because now we're just talking about a C two bulk variance. Uh, with respect to the side setbacks, it's a C two bulk variance. And we would have to show that the benefits outweigh the detriment. And it's my testimony that because this is a split zone lot, uh, i- if we were to do seven and a half on each side, we would comply with the HD seven requirements. And you, uh, aptly pointed out before that, uh, a third of it was in the HD seven and two thirds were in the R ten, so we should lean more to the R ten. But if you look at the ordinance provision, and I'd, and I'd be happy to read it to you, it's in section 900. That says you can use 20 feet of the other side. So now we flipped it to where the majority of it would be, uh, entitled to the HD six criteria. And the HD six criteria would be, uh, seven, one side, 15 combined. But what I'm saying is this house with its setback, the rooms being larger are gonna be a benefit. The applicant is proposing a six foot fence which provides the buffer, which, what, what the side setback relief is, is based on. And I also, if you were paying for my t- testimony, I assume you, you were because...
You're saying housing in Lakewood? Yeah, I heard that.
No, no, the, the part where I said that it's my testimony and, and my professional opinion that the setbacks as submitted are appropriate, but that, that decision rests with the board. And if the board, if the board says that the setbacks need to be bigger, clearly we would change the...
I, I, I for one would like the, you know, if we're gonna, you're following the R ten, both houses per currier, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Let's try to stick to that as much as we can. You know that this board, I don't mean the board, very, doesn't like to see six and seven and a half. You'd like to go to 10 and 10 and something like that, so you could, you could make it work. Then we'll discuss the front little piece with parking and pulling out the driveway. But, but I would like to stick as close as you can to the 12, to the R ten, uh, both houses per currier, the one you're using. And try to make it work with that. The house doesn't have to be 31 and 0.3 feet wide. House could be 27 feet wide or 28 feet wide. I remember when I grew up here, like, with a house who was 22 feet, that was like, wow, that's a big house. You know, so now the standard became 31, but that, let it fit, let it work the way it's supposed to. Uh, you know, six, at six feet on the side, you know...
And, and, and again, as, as I've indicated, clearly that's a decision for the board. It's a C two variance where the, where the benefits outweigh the detriment. And I think in this case, the detriment would be as to how it affects the neighbors. And we did send out notices to the neighbors, so I would expect the board to listen to the testimony of the public and then the board to make the determination on, on what they thought was appropriate.
I agree with that.
So we agree on almost everything.
No, we just, yeah, I'm agreeing with your testimony.
Almost every, yeah.
Almost to disagree, uh, which currier would you choose? And I'm glad you used your figure that you put down in the paper of an R twelve.
Well, you, you, you just said you agreed with me as far as we'll let the public talk because it does impact the, the immediate neighbors the most.
Okay. So now let's talk about the parking a minute. On 50 feet, um, uh, my colleague has said, we have, we have four spaces on 50 feet. I guess, I assume this is gonna be a, a easement over here?
Yes.
Because I see that...
Yes, there would, there would be cross access easements to the park.
Cross access easement?
Yes.
So there's no homeowners, um, association?
No, no.
On the first, on the, on the 50 by 50, on that little piece, on 50 by 50?
On, on the 50 by 50, to the extent that the cross access is needed, so that each person has their own parking. And, and, and the way it's drawn, uh, I, I would assume if the board acted favorably, is not the way it would be built. Because there will be a provision for turnaround, so that nobody backs out onto James Street.
So, I'm gonna be, I need to see that.
There's, there is plenty of room to have, uh, in 50 feet wide, to have, uh, 36 feet of pavement.
A wood turn?
Uh, it, it would be a hammerhead turn.
Hammerhead?
Yes. So that the, the vehicle can back up. And, and again, that, that would be part of a cross access easement. They would use, both use the same hammerhead, and they would back up and turn around and come out. And the depth of it, uh, is, is certainly sufficient, uh, to allow, uh, that kind of a movement. Uh, and, uh, I, I've been designing these things for, uh, since neither of us had gray hair. Uh, and, and I can tell you, looking at it, and, and I think Dave would agree that, you know, we use 36 feet worth for, uh, the actual parking spaces. And, and then all we need for that hammerhead is maybe 12 foot for the hammerhead. And there's a place where the vehicles can then turn around and come out for.
So, anyone, anyone else? Do you have any say?
What was the...
Where, where are the air conditioners?
Uh, well, on the side where it's seven and a half feet, that, that is plenty of room. On the side where it's six feet, if the board determines that six, it, it doesn't sound like you're approving the six feet anyway. But if you were to approve the six feet, we would put them in the back. If, if we take that to seven and a half feet, uh, then there's enough room for the air conditioning.
So, where are they gonna put the air conditioner in that? I think come back later and say that it doesn't work, well, let's put it aside on six feet, right?
Well, if, if the board acts favorably on the six feet, we can have that discussion. If not, we should save time for the other applicants that wanna get hurt.
I like this curve.
I just don't understand, sorry, I just don't understand how the parking spots that are all the way to the right, parking spots that are all the way to the left, will utilize the hammerhead turnaround if there's going to be cars parked, um, in the middle.
Well, here aren't gonna be cars parked in the middle. The way these, uh, this is set up, uh, isn't the way I would have set it up. I would have had these back here. And these back here. Uh, and then all of these would have a provision coming across here, so that these vehicles can turn and go this way. And these vehicles can turn and go this way. This guy would turn this way and come out. This guy would turn this way.
Rodney, okay, so first of all, for anybody, I would say that we're gonna see this plan, so these big guys, a little bit, this way.
Well, there's, there's only, uh, six members here this evening. And, and I'm assuming the standard procedure for the board is, we're, we're not gonna vote tonight. We're gonna come back at the next meeting when there's seven, because the applicant is entitled to have seven. And, and I heard the chairman say this many times in the year, and I think this will be the first time they would do it. And the applicant would submit those plans, so the board could see that before they vote.
So then I have a suggestion, instead of wasting time, that we'll agenda the next, why don't you table it right now?
The, the notice was given to the public. I, I'm not the chairman.
I'll, I'll not get to the public, I'll take what people have to say.
And then, and then we'll, and then we'll...
Table it, but, and then you can, you can bring then the revised plan, and you'll have to renotice, because you're bringing the revised plan.
Uh, I, I would argue, I would argue, and Mr. Penzer's esteemed son-in-law would probably argue, if he was at the microphone, that, that that's not a substantial change that doesn't need a renotice. We would certainly re... We would defer, we would defer to your...
I'm trying to remember who pays my, oh, yeah, I agree with the chairman.
You, you think showing a hammerhead turnaround is a substantial change that would require renotice?
Why don't we listen to the public in case we might also also progress that it turns to the width of the duplex?
That, that, that is certainly a good idea. I wish I had asked the board to do that.
I, I didn't quite hear your testimony on the fence. Is it a vinyl fence? Not offensive?
Well, we, we...
Oh, I thought you said something about a fence.
We, we said the applicant's gonna put a fence there to, uh, uh, to buffer.
Where?
Uh, along the property line, if the board granted a six foot side setback, which it doesn't seem like they're gonna do anyway. Uh, and, and we would do a six foot privacy fence. I, I haven't spoken to the applicant. Uh, I, I can certainly try to get that information on the specifics of the fence.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Because I understand that he may have had conversations with people who have a living center, uh, I'm gonna say it wrong, family living center, whatever.
Yes.
About a fence.
Yes.
I have your letter where, right over here, uh, that they put in a six foot fence, but it doesn't say one night. And that's exactly what he said.
Can you check with your client, is it on the entire property line or to the front?
It's, it's gonna be on the side and the rear.
So the full side?
Both, both sides and the rear.
Full side to the front of the street?
We would, to the front of the house.
Six foot vinyl?
Six, six foot privacy fence.
How do you define a privacy fence?
You can't see through it.
Can we try to, let's not make the 64 questions. What kind of fence is it gonna be?
Well, there, there is a fence on part of it, so the existing fence that's there on part of the property line, we would keep.
Now, the next question's gonna be...
What, what, what's that fence like?
Good thing, the wood fence is...
It's, it's a wood fence. So we, we would do a matching wood fence on the rest of it.
Is it a stockade wood fence? I feel like a dentist pulling his... Is it a stockade, what is it?
Jerry, why don't you tell them? Replace the wood fence with a vinyl fence, uh, privacy vinyl fence. That's a, that's a vinyl.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I think, I think, um, pushing back to that, I have another question.
Yeah, I think the question is for line handles, for our professionals. I already wrote a question, and a couple of questions for that. We didn't 200 feet, a week, right? Right, and you have this on monthly, and you only have one week, so yes, we can give that to you.
In, in the HD six and HD seven zones, they passed an ordinance that said you can't do residential within, uh, 200 feet of Route nine. Uh, since this is in the R ten zone, it's different. And, and we're at, we're at, we're at the zoning board.
What are we using here? What are that?
We're, we're at the zoning board, asking for approval of this. So this is, this is a, it's not a standard, uh, animal. This is a, a different type of animal.
But what I can, this is a hundred, it's a hundred foot, so it might add, add to the HD, so...
And, and, and the in, the intent of that ordinance was that we didn't have, that we, uh, developed commercial where we could. Uh, so if you say you can't build residential on this property, you're zoning it into inutility because it's in the R ten which doesn't permit business. So, uh, it, this is a clear application that needs to come to the zoning board to say what makes sense here. And since we have three duplexes next to it and duplexes across the street... They are...
Jerry, would they need a separate...
Well, that means a use variance, well, that means residential...
Yeah, so we're playing both sides of the fence.
Just going to explain, are you saying you're taking the legacies of the HD six, the legacies of, uh, 40? Of, of R ten, and that's either taking the...
Well, you're, you're playing, you're playing the other side, and you're, you're taking the strictness of, of both, and applying it on this.
Let me deal with you, take one of them. I have a, I have a D six or an R ten. Which, which you wanted to be?
Well, I, I, I think Mr. Dassey had a, a good suggestion of opening it to the public.
There is a reason why they have a D six. So, they do want, so you could build on this ground, not, 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 you know, build a building in 20, in HD six section, right?
Well, we'd have to take the other 20 feet of it, and then we'd have 45 feet to put a, put a, no, to put a convert, commercial use. And it's certainly my testimony...
Or go use and build a house, and do that as well, as well as building a PR, that was before, I can say that now. I mean, there is a possibility that you can do that, which is not...
Well, there, 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 there is a possibility to develop this property. There, if the board were to say, this is within 200 feet, we're not gonna let you do a residence, then, then we can't build a residence. And a commercial doesn't make sense to them. So we need a use variance on this property, and that's what we're here asking for, is a use variance.
Okay, anyone on the phone wanna be here on appeal number 4024? Please step up. Remember the four minute rule.
Pauline, would you raise your hand if you affirm your appeal of order?
I affirm. I wanna object on the record to the illegal four minute rule. If, if there would have been an attorney over here, you would have given him more than four minutes. And I discussed this already with this attorney and the, and the planning board attorney. And they agreed that according to the M L U L, you cannot make, give different treatment to the members of the public making statements to an attorney.
Say I, I agree to that?
Yes. I could show you the email. Actually, the email was referenced, um, was made to take back Lakewood. I'll send you the email after the meeting.
Testimony, this is under section 10 of the M L U L, number D. Testimony of all witnesses, doesn't say attorney. Testimony of all witnesses related to an application for development shall be taken under oath, etc. On the right of course examination, shall be permitted to all universal authorities for their attorneys. We have, we have a rule here, if you're gonna look at the complex...
Is an attorney a interested party, or i- is he a witness?
Sir, you got four minutes. Let's update the vote.
So I wanna just put on the record that this law is illegal. And the reason why this rule is made over here is because they're treating the public commons as a nuisance. It seems to me that the zoning board is trying to comply with the rules like in communist Russia. Communist Russia. If I spelled it, if I pronounced it wrong, you can tell with the right style. Now, Brian, I have a question for you. Is this James Street that you have here?
Yes, it is.
Are you putting in basements over here? Are you finishing up the basement?
I'm not finishing up the basement. We, we're expecting that these will be typical duplexes, the same as the other duplexes on the block, which will have basements. And the, uh, homeowners will have the option, the same as the other homeowners on the, on the block, will have the option of having basement apartments, uh, if, if that's what is appropriate for their family.
When you go to the county, will you identify this as a four family house? Or you will identify this as a duplex, as two families, actually two units, not four units? Because the county, um, asks for impact fees and traffic studies when you do a subdivision like this. Would you identify this as units in the basement? Or you will basically, because they don't know what's going on in Lakewood, you would say is like there's no basement?
Well, the county knows very well what's going on, uh, in Lakewood. And you were at the last county planning board meeting, telling them what was going on. So the county knows what's being built. It'll be characterized exactly the way it is, a- and they'll charge the impact fees based on what's fair.
Now, just the last question about the sidewalks. Where are the sidewalks identified over here? As far as these two types of sidewalks, because you're making like an easement, a, a hammer, you need sidewalks for the units where they will tell the kids, don't go out over there because cross the neighbor's car, and this car will be in exactly. And plus, you need for the members of the public to go. So you need to identify two types of sidewalks. Where are you identifying the sidewalks in this plan?
My favorite question for Mr. Klein is always his last question. I saw, I'm happy this is it. Uh, the applicant is not asking for waivers on the sidewalk. He will provide sidewalk according to the ordinance. It's not shown on that plan. If the board wants it as a condition of approval, we'll show it. The sidewalk is typically within the right of way.
Could you say that it's safe to make the sidewalks like the ordinance provide when you still have a hammerhead before the sidewalk?
Yes. And, and this requires county approval, and the county is, is rather vigilant. And I'm sure that any plan approved by the county will be safe.
And I'm just making a small statement. I could just say that that was by the county, they say is they don't take safety of the people living there in consideration. They only deal with their roads. So for your saying over here and testifying that the county takes that in consideration, that safety of the people that are living there, I think it's incorrect. You should...
That was, that was another question, and I disagree vehemently. The county does and always has take into consideration the safety of the residents.
Mr. Penner, who prepared the notice that was in the paper?
Um, who was that? Mr. Penzer's on.
There's no mention whatsoever that you're asking for a use variance. None, and you're asking for at least two. All it talks about is, uh, applicant is requesting a duplex, blah, 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 with bulk variances. And after that, as a catchall, the applicant also seeks all of the waivers and variances that might be requested. It seems to me to be appropriate. The notice should say that you're asking for at least one, and now two, use for two. The notice should say that you're asking for at least one, and now two, use for two. It also says that, um, documents can be inspected at this Seagull's office from eight AM to midnight.
Brandon's a very hard worker. And, and the board had asked if we would renotice, based on that.
I don't think you have jurisdiction. I mean, I just received this notice. I don't think we have jurisdiction to go forward. There's no notice to the public that this is a use variance.
Okay? We know, okay? So we have to start all over again?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry to inconvenience anyone out there, but I just.
Sorry. Before you come back, could you just, if you're going, and just sort of mark it so it's all clear, and also the wet side, the other side, as it's generally?
Okay.
Thank you.
So if that's the case, we will close on appeal number, uh, forty twenty-four, this tomorrow, and it'll be renoticed, back on the calendar and due time. Anyone that's here for it, get on, there's an eight minutes. Thank you. Moving forward, appeal number four zero zero na- zero seven, Arm Langley, LLC.
Mr. Chairman, if we can, I'm doing that application and the one after that, four zero two one, uh, PBN PR, which I believe there are a lot of people here, uh, who would like to voice their opinion on that application. Um, I've spoken with the applicant, and based upon conversations they've received, uh, over the last couple of days, at this time, we're looking at application four zero two one, uh, looking to table the application, so we can have an opportunity, so we could have an opportunity to speak with, as you can see, there are several people here who have, uh, comments they would like to be made, uh, and we'd like to see possibly, you might want to change the application to a commercial application as opposed to, uh, the apartments.
You withdrawing the application?
At this time, we'd like to table it. We, we might, we might end up withdrawing it, I would just have, I was advised.
Are you saying you're going to be coming back for apartments, or something else?
I don't know, until we speak with, with the application. I was told that there was, uh, an attorney was hired on this, um, I got an email that Mr. Gazarowski was hired, uh, to represent them, and I haven't had an opportunity to speak with him. The applicant very well might end up just withdrawing the application. Um, from my understanding, again, I'm, I'm covering the application, uh, for the attorney who usually handles this, but that being said, I believe this is the first time it's listed, uh, before the board.
Why do you think?
Thank you. He wants to, he wants to table the application.
Why don't you withdraw the application and renotice? I mean, I don't think it's, we.
Well, I have no, I have no, I have no.
I was just going to do things. It's not, I mean, your fault.
I, I have no problem having to renotice the application, I just would like to see if we could save on application fee. We very well might withdraw the application. I would just like an opportunity, uh, that we can speak with, there seem like there are a lot of objectives. I could tell you, we're, we're not going to get your part. Well, I'd also like to addition, we're not going to be voting on this application tonight. My understanding, there are only six board members here, uh, and the new rules indicate that we're not, we don't have, we don't have the right anymore to table because of there are only six members, but that we have the right to have the application, make the comments, and then come back and have a seventh member here, the, um, listen to the tape and vote. So we're not going to be voting tonight either way. We're not going to get through much in forty-five minutes. Um, why don't we try and make it, why don't we try and make, why don't we try and make this more, there are plenty of other applications here, and there are plenty of other people here who want to get to a mic. I think it'll be better use of everyone's time if we just table it. I'll agree to renotice. I'm not saying come back in three weeks. I will have to agree to renotice on the application. All I'm asking for is an, is an opportunity to go ahead and come back. Very well, we might withdraw the application, but at this time, I, I believe we should have the opportunity, uh, to come back.
Maybe people don't want to come back.
May I suggest, Chairman, that the applicant withdraw the application with the underst- so that there's nothing pending, with the understanding that your application fee is preserved, uh, if you might need to propose new escrows to, uh, have Mr. Bo, or Mr. O'Banko review the plans. And then, of course, you'll renotice if you.
I, I have no problem withdrawing the application, as long as we're understanding that we can, the fees, we don't have to pay again for the application, um, the review fees are the review fees. If I change the application, I'm going to have to pay those. But I have no objection, uh, to that.
Withdraw, do whatever you have to do. Even, even if we come forward, we can go ahead and ask the.
But I think it's more appropriate, there are a lot of.
I'm not, I'm not worried about what, I'm here. He is worried. I wonder what's the right thing to do.
I, I think probably because there's sections, there's so many, I, I told you, there are a lot of, there are at least two people here with a plaque, um, that he has to be, be considered withdrawn.
Do you have an objection yet?
Looks like we're doing the wave, you know, the wave for the wave. I would, I would recommend, I would recommend that the applicant withdraw the application with the understanding he deserves application fees, and have to renotice and replenish the escrow account, to have whatever plans are submitted, new buyer, new.
Which we would have, we, we have no objection to, um, as all true.
Yeah, I, I mean, I mean, even if I were to say, let's try to continue the application, he's going to try to continue application without, without any real merit over here, knowing that he's got this whole thing behind him, so he can move forward. So, you know what I'm saying? So he kind of can, he can move forward, because he's just going to have all the people there, uh, behind him, hammering it, so why don't we just withdraw, and come back to a complete application, we're going to have one as far.
So right now, there's no application?
With, with the right reserve on the fees.
That's it, you and, and Brandon. Okay, so you're withdrawing the application, so.
With the right to, to credit the fees.
Yeah.
You can accept the withdrawal, if you understand any applicants.
Okay, so right now, right now, I'm sure Adam Feffer, the attorney for appeal number four zero two one, PBN PR Homes, the application, he's withdrawing the application, and we'll be back on here at later time, whenever he so desires to bring it back. Can I ask all the favor? Okay, uh, appeal number four zero two one is application.
Thank you very much.
Back in here in five.
Thank you. Okay, we'll give it a minute.
We'll be back. We'll see you next month.
I'm on your board.
That's going to be a traffic jam in Lakewood. More race.
Traffic jam outside.
You're doing this one, right?
Can I ask, can I ask quietly, so we can move ahead?
I'm here for my team, but I'm going to talk to the rest of the jurisdiction.
I object to that.
Can I ask, can I ask quietly, I need to move forward?
Moving forward.
Yes? Appeal number four zero three zero Zebra, on Stone Avenue.
Yes.
I think they did that.
Okay, so anyone that's here for appeal number four zero three zero Zebra, that's six forty-two, Stone Avenue? Saying no? Okay, whoever is here, uh, it's not going to be her, I wasn't at the point, yeah. Thank you. Uh, okay, back to appeal number four zero zero seven, Arm Langley.
Four Street, lot four thirty-nine, lot forty-seven, HD seven zone, from ten duplexes and four single families, from Terry Road and Junior Plan at April tenth, twenty-four, twenty-seventeen. The applicant requests use variance for nothing even necessary, from four single-family homes and five complete buildings on ten zero lot nine, on the two-point-eight acre property. Use variance is required in each single-family home, not being admitted to use in the zone. Both variances are also required for last size, and here you are.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Adam Feffer, on behalf of the applicant. Um, as Brandon indicated, we're here before you on an application for five duplexes and four single families, as well as another, a lot that'll be existing, uh, for a commercial building. Uh, that's on a separate lot.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, before he proceeds with the application, my name is Susan Di Maria, I'm an attorney.
You have to get closer to the mic.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Can you finish, please, to this intro?
Sure, but I'm, I want to speak to the board about jurisdiction.
I'll give you a second.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, as I indicated, it's for five duplexes, uh, ten, five duplexes, ten units, uh, as well as four single-family homes, as well as there's another lot that they're subdividing off of the contiguous property. Uh, this, a portion of this property is, has already been approved at the planning board for, on a cul-de-sac for three duplexes, six units. Uh, the applicant, uh, decided to try and make a better application, and made an agreement to acquire additional property. Uh, that additional property will, we believe, uh, makes for a better overall application. Um, I do, Brian Flannery here, testifies to, as to, um, anything regarding engineering, an expert. Uh, we do have four exhibits in the county, and Jerry, I just want to get those on the record, it'll be A one through four.
One, we listen first to this attorney, for the, I, I, sorry about the objection. I think you have an objection about the jurisdiction.
Uh, yes, I do. Uh, my name is Susan Di Maria, I'm an attorney at O'Malley, Sermon and Michelini in Brick.
Your left hand, please, I'm sorry.
Di Maria, D I M A R I A. Um, the, there's an objectors group, the senior action group, uh, who are interested parties in over than two hundred feet of the property. They are represented by Michelle Donato, but she could not be here tonight, so she asked me to attend.
So who is it that you're representing?
It's the senior action group. They're, yeah, they're actually represented by Michelle Donato, but she could not be here.
Are they incorporated organization?
Yeah. You are?
Let's, let's, go ahead.
Okay. I think the, the first problem that the board has to look at is, you do not have jurisdiction tonight, based on the notice. The notice does correctly say that you are requiring a use variance for the single-family homes. The problem is with the other uses, with the duplexes. The ordinance is written in such a way that the duplexes are not permitted or conditional in that zone. They also require use variance, from D one, and not a D three conditional use variance. The ordinance, in the HD seven zone, which is where this is, all of the permitted uses are the same as the HD six, plus some others, but that's not true for the conditional uses. Town, uh, duplexes are conditional use in the HD six zone, but the HD seven zone has a separate list. It allows hospitals, townhouses, two-family dwellings, and digital billboards. And that's not what this is, these are duplexes. They are not permitted, and they are not conditional uses, and they are not permitted at all.
It doesn't say, doesn't it say, and I don't have the book in front of me, in the HD seven, everything that's in HD six plus.
That, that's.
I can't do that.
No, that's just to prove.
Therefore, it'll encompass, HD seven will encompass everything of the HD six, plus some more.
Not in terms of the conditional uses. It has a separate list, it does not say under conditional uses, that the conditional uses, all of them permitted in HD six are also permitted in HD seven.
But isn't that paragraph active, looking at the uses? Or is it before that paragraph?
It is. Yeah, yeah.
It's like the other one.
It is, in the HD seven highway development zone, this is paragraph two, conditional uses.
Scotty, can you give me the section number, please?
Sure. Um, for the HD, highway development zone, HD seven, it's section eight. Um, I don't, H, I'm sorry, I don't have the preliminary number.
It's a, it's not only.
Thank you. Um, section one is permitted uses, it states all, all principal uses permitted in the HD six district are also permitted in the HD seven, and that gives a list of certain other things, but then when it comes to conditional uses, it does not have the same language. It says, in addition to the conditional use standards provided in Article ten, which are just the general conditional use standards for duplexes, or for anything, it says, the, here are our conditional uses, hospitals, townhouses, two-family dwellings defined at eighteen dash ten ten A three, and digital billboards. It does not say anything about duplexes.
What about two-family dwellings?
They're not two-family dwellings. Duplexes are, according to the ordinance.
Are two-family dwellings allowed as conditional uses in the HD seven zone? Yes.
They would be, but this is not, these are not two-family dwellings, these are explicitly townhouses.
Uh, the townhouses are conditional.
I'm sorry, not townhouses, they're duplexes. And duplexes are not permitted.
Jerry, question on definition. A, a, a semi, isn't this called also a semi-detached home?
I'm sorry?
Isn't this called a semi-detached home? That really duplexes is a semi-detached home, therefore it's a, are they for two families, semi-detached home?
Mr. Chairman, if I can swear in my professional, Brian Flannery, could, better eloquent, um, yes, I'd like to rebut.
Do you find there's a, a great distinction between two-family home and a duplex?
The ordinance does. The ordinance defines, I mean, the ordinance makes the distinction.
All right, I, I, uh, let's go through it. It's two-family dwelling is defined under eighteen dash one hundred, as a building on a single lot containing two dwelling units, which is going to be two lots, that, that is getting the definition difference.
It's two, well, plus there's a specific definition on duplex.
I understand, I, I'm, I'm, all right. Um, it's totally separated from the other by unpeared ceiling and floors, makes it, a duplex is defined as a building on a single lot containing two side-by-side only dwelling units, with fronts staggered up more than three feet. So, as a practical matter, what's the difference between a two-family and a duplex?
If there was no difference, the ordinance wouldn't have both of the definitions, but it's not, it's not, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
It's a special category, it's its own category, it's a duplex. It is the two-side-by-side units, it makes a difference also because of the lots. There are two separate lots. And they're not the same, I mean, you know, I'm not saying that the application can't go forward, it just can't go forward tonight.
Please, just, just. In HD seven, I'm talking out loud here, because as usual, some of the kids, usually initiate people sort of flying here. Um, HD seven zone, permitted uses, all principal uses permitted in the HD six district, all right? The HD six district as a conditional use, they allow duplexes.
Correct.
So why would you need a use variance to have duplexes in the HD seven zone?
Because the HD seven seven zone, there's a distinction between the permitted use and the conditional use, and the conditional.
Permitted uses of what?
There's a distinction between permitted uses and conditional uses.
Yes.
Conditional uses are appropriate for the zone, but not to every piece of property, and they have conditions. But in this, in the HD seven zone, it has a specific list of the, uh, conditional uses. It doesn't have the same language as it does with permitted uses, and relate it back to the HD six zone.
But unconditional uses in the HD six fall under the jurisdiction of the first paragraph you were citing, that falls under anything that's in HD six.
We need to get.
No, not, no, because it's the conditional use section, which is separate.
On HD six and photos, if there is a condition in HD six that's permissible, that'll fall under permitted uses now with HD seven, because it falls under those conditions that it meets, and therefore, we're going to move forward, now there's new sets of conditions, which has nothing to do with HD six, um, and it'll be, um, whatever it is, but if it falls under the conditions of the HD six, then it falls under the condition of your latter year, then, then it falls under the HD seven. I'm sorry.
But that's not what it, that's not what it says.
Well, if it's permitted use in the HD six, even if it's under condition, then it'll fall on the, well, act of the language, anything that's permitted will be in the HD six.
But that's not, that's, that's not what the ordinance says, the ordinance.
I understand the position, let's hear it from Mr. Feffer.
If I can swear in my professional, Brian Flannery.
Flannery, you swear to tell the truth, don't be kind.
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. Uh, section eighteen ten ten of the ordinance. A, in those zone districts in which townhouses are permitted conditional use, and I think we all agree, in this zone, townhouses are permitted conditional use. Under 3, it says maximum density, eight townhouses or 16 dwelling units per acre. Now, here's the important part, which has been before the planning board and this board for, I'm trying to see when the date of it was, probably 2007. "Notwithstanding the definition of a townhouse in this chapter, a townhouse may consist of two-family building structure, which shall be considered two dwelling units for the purpose." So this section is clearly saying, we can have two-family townhouses. So if you don't want to call these duplexes, call them two-unit townhouses, and they're specifically permitted by section 181010. And the planning board has accepted that, and the zoning board has accepted that.
Isn't there another chapter, another subparagraph that says, "A townhouse is three or more?"
The definition, and, and this says, the definition of townhouse says three or more, but if you listen, and it, I should underline it in my book, "Notwithstanding the definition of a townhouse in this chapter." So that means notwithstanding that definition that says it's three, we're allowing two, and it was specifically put in to allow two in the HD7.
So it says three or half, is that what you're saying?
Yes, for this particular conditional use, not for everything, for this particular conditional use, which is what we're here for this evening.
Jerry, do you agree to that? Is the only objection to jurisdiction, the duplex notice issue?
Well, actually, the notice also refers several times to bulk variances, and these are not bulk, they're bulk variances in, you know, theoretically, but they're under the conditional use standards.
What are the bulk?
They're subject to different legal tests than just regular C1 and C2 variances.
Well, aren't they bulk variances?
But they're conditioned, they're bulk variances in the conditional use standards.
Oh, that, that could be, but they're, he's asking for bulk variances.
Right.
Oh, so then.
But it doesn't, it never says anything in this, in this notice about conditional use. I mean, if the argument is that duplexes are conditional uses in this zone, then it should say that somewhere, because they're not bulk variances, and they're not the same standard. The proof is different. It might matter. It does not fairly state the nature of the matters to be considered.
Sorry it took so long. Section 11 of the Minnesota Land Use Law states, in the heading, "Is contents of notice appearing on application for development or adoption of land here?" Notice pursuant to section 11 shall state the date, the time, and the place of the hearing, the nature of the matter to be considered, and the identification currently proposed by street address. So, does this notice tell the public the nature of the matter to be considered? Think it does?
No, it doesn't, no, it does not, because it does not identify the duplexes as we form in use variances.
Because we disagree, they don't.
I understand that.
So it's a difference of, of a thing. We believe that they don't require the use variance, and they're permitted use.
Get closer to the mic.
Our position is, our notice is sufficient, as the use variance is not required on the duplexes in the HD7.
I think there's sufficient notice to the public to go forward, Chairman. For the reasons I've said forth earlier. HD7 zones allow as a permitted, as a, as a use, anything that's permitted use in HD6. Now, duplexes are not permitted uses, as you said, they're conditional. Condition, there's a difference. But I think that the nature of the application has been properly presented in here, in the notice, I think. Are you sure that counsel will preserve our rights in the event?
Oh, yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
As I indicated before, yes, I apologize.
What about what you're suggesting?
While, while Mr. Halverson is set down, if I can just also confirm, at this point, because there are only going to be six members here that will go forward with the application tonight, we're getting a statement, there's not going to be a vote, as we would like seven people to be voting on this application, and that a seventh member will listen to the tape at a later date, and, and the vote will be conducted at that point.
Okay.
But those are the rules.
What?
But those are the rules.
Yeah, rules, I said those are the rules. You apply them to the rules, that's very nice to you.
My mother taught me well. Okay, as, as Mr. Halverson is now back in the room, as I indicated, a portion of this property was a subject matter of a previously approved three duplex, six-unit cul-de-sac approval at the planning board. This applicant has, was able to obtain some additional lands to try and make this application a better application. As indicated.
On which property? On the wood side?
Mr. Flannery, Brian, if you can.
Lot 7.
Lot 7, that's off, Brian, or off, or off?
Cross Street.
Cross, I'm sorry.
Cross Street.
The one, the one question to?
A1 is the tax map, which shows the.
Yeah, you were.
I was.
Yeah.
A2 is the map that's submitted, and it's labeled as proposed, and it shows the proposed 14 lots that we're asking for. I have A3 and A4. A3 is the subdivision that was approved by the planning board for Lot 7, and it was three duplexes on a cul-de-sac on that same lot.
Point ahead over there, same lot?
This lot, right. This lot, this application is Lot 7 and Lot 4. Lot 4 has the commercial component, and part of Lot 4, which was underutilized, is being added to this to come up with the proposed, and, and, and quarters, so we have them all indicated in record in the conceptual plan, and was done by KBA Engineering, and it shows 17 conforming townhouses. So this, this applicant could go to the planning board by right and get 17 townhouses. The applicant felt that the 14 units that are proposed are a better alternative, and decided to come here and ask for a use variance, and the use variance that we're asking for is relating to the singles, because single-family homes are not a permitted use in the HD7 zone.
We'll get to that in a minute.
So that, that was a good segue. As Brian, at this point, we can go off through Terry's review letter, and we'll go, we'll address a lot of the board's questions there.
So as indicated in Terry's letter, a use variance is required due to single-family homes not being permitted. That's highlighted on page 2 of the review letter. Then we get to the zoning comments on page 3. Number 1 indicates, "Single-family dwellings are not a permitted use." Item 2, "We have four proposed single families." If you look at A2, which is the proposed development, the four single families are on the westerly end of the piece of Lot 4 that was formerly commercial, that's being added. And if those, each single, the two singles together, were replaced with triplexes, those would be townhouse units, and, and that would also be a conforming application. It's very easy to see how this applicant could have gone to the planning board and got the duplexes that he's asking for, and instead of four single families, he could have gotten six townhouse units.
Why can't he do that?
Because he feels that this application is better for everybody. And, and the, the zoning board is here to hear those applications for special reasons. And the special reason is that the housing opportunities that would be provided by the four singles are better housing opportunities than would be in the triplexes. Additionally, all we've heard since Take Back Lakewood, this anonymous group that stays anonymous, so that, for whatever their reason is, so that nobody can bully them while they are busy bullying anybody that has a different opinion from them, says that the problem we have in town is traffic. And what they really mean to say, and it's not clarified, is the problem is traffic congestion. I don't think there's, there's very few people in Lakewood that would mind if we doubled the traffic, as long as they didn't have to wait in the traffic. So it's traffic congestion, and having been in Lakewood for a very long time, it's very clear, and there is traffic congestion. I was here in 1979, when there weren't any seniors, and you went up and down Cross Street and didn't see anybody else. Now it's 2017, there's very few places where you can go, except on holidays, and not see other people. So traffic congestion is a problem. Having 14 units instead of 17 certainly helps the traffic. So when somebody says, "Who is it going to help?", it's going to help the resident, the future residents, and it's going to help.
Have you asked the developer, did you say?
No, no. I'm for smart growth. And Lakewood spent a long time on the smart growth plan, and the smart growth plan puts this in a highway node, and the highway node said, they, they're encouraging development of commercial and residential properties to provide for the needs of the citizens of Lakewood. So the reason we're here is, is because we're asking for those singles, and we're asking for variances, bulk variances relating to the singles, which all would go away if we did the 17-unit townhouse, and we'd be at the planning board, and we'd have the same group of people objecting at the planning board, but they would be objecting to a buy-right application. So if I'm not successful in, in convincing the board of my opinion that this is a better application, and it's denied, we'll all be at the planning board doing the townhouse application, and, and it's not going to be a benefit to anybody, other than a psychological benefit of objectors winning in argument. The, continuing in his report, it indicates bulk variance is required for the duplex lots, and, and the reason it says there's bulk variances required for the duplex lot is because the portion of the lot area, and if you're looking on A2, you can see that this lot was chopped up, and it's a private road, and it was chopped up into pieces. I read you earlier, section 181010, which says, "Based on section 181010, in this particular section of the ordinance, two-unit buildings can be considered as townhouses." There's no restriction on lot sizes or any of that information for the two-unit townhouses. And there's no requirement that a road be put in for the two-unit townhouses. So it's my testimony that those units completely comply with the ordinance. Now, we try to, in keeping with.
One second, let me just, so you're taking this application out from calling it a duplex, they're calling it a two-unit townhouse?
We called it, we called it a duplex because we didn't want to deceive anybody and use special terms. I know the board doesn't like it when I use that triplex term. You'd like to hear me say three-unit townhouse. We, we didn't want to deceive anybody. These look like duplexes.
So you're telling me now that, that you don't really need the 8,500 square feet for a duplex, because you're taking a townhouse?
That is correct.
Really?
It's in black and white in the ordinance. We, we put the lots, all.
I was trying to my profession, you want me to help you out on that?
Well, well, first of.
If, if Mr. Flannery's correct, can they, if you, while this is testimony, can you use the book at that? Can you get back to me in a few minutes?
Well, first of all.
Can I just get a clarification? What, what Mr. Flannery is doing, you're including the road area, which is going to be private, as part of the lot area, correct?
That is correct. And based on that, all of the lots are over 10,000 square feet. They're not just over 8,500, they're over 10,000.
I understand that. I just use 8,500 as the rule.
Right.
Like you said, you can say you're on a duplex.
Yes.
You're telling me that was that's out the window, and you didn't, we needed 10,000 for a duplex?
Correct.
Because you technically need a townhouse. They researched that, can you please, and get the insert, in a two-unit, is a duplex unit in HD7, in this particular case, called a townhouse? And I can apply townhouse?
No, I mean, I mean, I don't understand.
That's what you're doing to me now.
Our, our letter is, is what it says. We're not changing the letter.
So, help me out over here. Then I'll read back the notice question. If he's using townhouses, is this notice problematic? Where am I going over here?
That was, that was a different issue.
I, I'm coming back to the notice.
Mr. Daskey said, he intended the notice was okay to go forward. Now, what I'm going to say is that we've had this situation come up in multiple reviews, the planning board and the zoning board, on how to go through the ordinance and what to call it. And it is problematic. I'm not going to say no, but this is what we, this is what we call it, and we're not changing, we're not changing the letter.
That's my point, that's your position, but he's saying it's a townhouse. If you're applying the townhouse rules to it.
Should I read, I'm, I'm going to read section 181010 again.
The answer, my answer is this. In item 3 in the zoning, how we list it is what the board should act on.
So I'm acting as, I'm acting on it as a duplex.
Correct.
Not as a townhouse.
Correct.
You technically, technically, you're agreeing with Brian's interpretation now. You agree with me?
Correct, I'm agreeing, right. I'm calling it a duplex.
So I'm going to, so I'm not going to hear anything that's calling it a townhouse, and therefore apply townhouse standards to this application. So I'm going to, Jerry, are you agreeing?
Yes. Mr. Flannery, the private road, are you saying that the area of the private road is included in each lot, or?
Yes, it is.
Well, are you saying that each property has a road that goes through it?
Yes.
And there being association.
It's up to the board whether they want to accept that or not.
But, the chairman said he wasn't going to hear this, but apparently he didn't hear it the first time I read it. Section 181010 of the ordinance, it's labeled townhouses. It says in A, "In those districts in which townhouses are a permitted conditional use, townhouse developments shall be subject to the following conditions." And then under 3, on density, it says, "Notwithstanding the definition of a townhouse in this chapter, a townhouse may consist of two-family building structure." Now, if they weren't saying, there's a definition of townhouses that says three, and now we're saying two.
Do the light again, the two-family?
"Notwithstanding the definition of a townhouse in this chapter." That's telling you, it's different than your definition. "Notwithstanding the definition of a townhouse in this chapter," because the definition of a townhouse says three. "A townhouse may consist of a two-family building structure."
A townhouse may consist of a two-family building structure, meaning a basement apartment and a second, and a regular main floor, not double. That's what it means.
Well, that's.
That's the way I would interpret it, not the way you're interpreting.
That's, that's clearly not what it says.
I was just calling it a duplex.
And, and we have no problem with calling it a duplex and asking for whatever relief the board says we need.
A duplex is 8,500?
A duplex is 8,500, and each of the lots have over 10,000, and RVV has, has subtracted the road out, and if you can show me any place in the ordinance where it says you can't have a private road on your lot, or it restricts what can be on your lot, well then, we'll say, we need that. And, and we'll ask for whatever variances the board says we need. But as part of my testimony, I'm going to tell you, it's my opinion that we don't need them. And, and I can also tell you that the planning board has approved applications with private roads, with the lot areas of the private roads included in the lots.
Okay. Let me, let me go down there a little bit. Let me, let me go down there a little bit. Let me pick up on that note that the Township Committee and the planning board has had a lot of problems with private roads set up this big, because no one takes care of it, no one plows the snow, and no one does anything to it, and therefore pulls back onto the Township's jurisdiction, and then the homeowners association then turns to the Township and says, "Please take it over for me," and now I have a problem.
"Notwithstanding private versus public, I don't understand how you can include the area of the private road as part of the whole lot for bulk variance, for bulk purposes." How big are these lots, the duplex lots, if you sub out the road?
Dave did that in his report.
I understand that. They're much smaller than 8,500 feet.
Well, there's some that are smaller than 8,500 square feet.
So that, to use your proposal, you could put the house right at the edge of the private road.
That's correct.
Well, there are setbacks.
No, why would you have to care about the setback?
Because the other provisions of the ordinance provide for setbacks.
Where's the setback from? Is it from the front of the property?
The setbacks that are, that are indicated are from internal driveways, and that's what these would be, is internal driveways.
What? I didn't get that right.
So in other words, you would, he would create an easement for the road, he would measure from that easement line.
Well, no, 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 no. You're, you're saying the front of the property line is, I don't know, it's the furthest west of that red line.
That is correct.
So, so the setback would, front setback would be from that line?
The ordinance specifies setback distances from the internal roads. So if, if we were to do this as a driveway and didn't call it a road, the ordinance says you have to be set back a certain distance from that, and we've complied with that setback.
And your sidewalk is going to be from that setback?
Well, I'm going to advise the Board that for the purpose of this application, it's my opinion that the size of the lots, of the duplex lots, should be with the private roads sub-downward. Because that's, what's the lot coverage size if you sub out the roads? Is it greater than this 35% that Mr. Flannery changed in his letter?
Well, the, Section 1810-10 says 30% of the entire track.
Right.
And, and we're not exceeding 30% of the entire track.
Is it each lot exceeding 30%?
It's a 30 some of the mark. I mean, that's item five.
The, the coverages that are listed are 15, 27, 22, 25, 28, 28. That's including the road. We didn't calculate them with the road taken out, but Section 1810-10 says the coverage of the entire track.
Okay. I'm looking at, I want to make sure I have this correctly now. On page three of Mr. Flannery's letter number five, he lists eight lots, which exceed 30%. Right? And is the percentages in there, 35%, 37.9, 37.9, and 37.1, is that with or without the road as part of the lot?
That's without the road.
So the roads are already out of that?
Missed, yes. RVV took the roads out of the lots.
Would you like to know this here?
That is correct.
And the review letter, the number on that over here?
The numbers on the plan were done by KVA in accordance with my opinion of the ordinance.
Right.
RVV, RVV took the areas out, and, and I don't see any justification in the ordinance. Maybe the objecting attorney is going to tell us about some, but I'm...
So what is the, what is, I think the road has, give me the numbers. Where am I at?
Well, the numbers are as listed in the RVV report. 35, 37.9, 37.9, and 37.1.
Page three, number five.
And the others are all less than that, or less than the 30%.
So then I got 7,900, 8,700.
So continuing through the report, we got to number three. And number three, RVV did the, the calculation as Dave has indicated. My opinion is that's not supported by the ordinance, and, and we comply with the ordinance. If the Board looks at it based on your professionals' determination, which I would expect you would, my testimony will be that if you look at A4, and we can do 17 conforming townhouses, and when you go to townhouses, there's nothing in the ordinance that says there's any lot area restriction, we would be comparing 14 units, which I think are a much nicer design, are going to be less traffic, are going to be more aesthetically pleasing, are going to be a better benefit to the, the future owners, and certainly provides a special reason for why this should be done, as opposed to the, the, what we're proposing. And, and the Township did a revision to their ordinance a couple of years ago, and they added Section 18-1014, which is when the 8,500 square foot lots came in. And that was done, the intent of that was that if you can get more townhouses than you can duplexes, they were of the opinion that you should relax the standards, and that's where the 8,500 number came in, because the Township saw the wisdom in having less duplex units than townhouse units, even if it was going down to the 10,000. Continuing in the report, the applicant has requested bulk variances for rear yard setback, and it lists a bunch of them. That's for the decks only. And if the Board feels the decks are no good, we would eliminate the variance for the decks, we'd put steps down, just like the poor guy that came in the first application, we'd put just the landing there, and we'll put patios on the ground. So we don't need that variance relief.
You don't need the...
I, I agree, that's...
You don't need the landing either, because you go straight out and stairs down.
No, the ordinance, the ordinance allows a landing. I think the reason Fran had that guy come, the landing is part of the steps. Landings are required in certain places as part of steps, right in the building code.
A little one, a six by six.
A little one, not six by six. That's why it's here. So we would put in whatever size landing is allowed by the building code and have steps down.
It's part of the steps.
Yes, yes. The six by six certainly rose to a level that was above that, and it's, it's a situation where the Board and me and Mr. Klein all agreed on something, and that doesn't happen very often, that the six by six made sense. But in this case, I acknowledge that we need that relief for the decks. If the Board finds that objectionable, the application, the applicant will remove that as relief and will comply with the ordinance. The applicant has requested bulk variance for maximum building coverage. Again, it's my testimony, that it's my opinion, based on the ordinance, we don't need those. But based on his report, we're asking for those, and I'll go back to the same argument that 14 nice ones is better than 17 more barracks-type.
Chad, just on that note, like I was asking, 17 townhouses that were approved by the Planning Board?
The Planning Board approved three duplex buildings for six units. The seventh...
Are they missing on the basement?
That was, that was on a public street.
Question. Did they have a public basement? Those 17, is it?
Yes. The six would have, the six would have basements, the 17 can have basement apartments, yes.
Were the six that were approved, cutting into a parking lot, just ignore it now?
No, the six that were approved were with a public road that, that the Township would maintain.
Do you know any of those easements or anything?
I understand why you did this, because my issue with the application is that commercial piece on the corner is actually functioning well, but it was built, you know, and it should be. You guys are eliminating over 100 parking spaces from the existing building that's on the corner. According to this proposal, you're eliminating approximately 100 parking spaces from an existing commercial busy building and replacing it with housing. So number one, I, I, you know, to me, I've done some of that, but also, all the traffic from that commercial building had the ability now to still onto Cross Street and not to go onto the other road, not as you start having to walk to the other. Also, I don't know the numbers and the calculations of this commercial building, and here's the concern with how many square feet it is and how many spaces you have now, and are you performing like that? I know you're taking probably 50% of the parking. So I understand why the planning would do that plan and wouldn't want to touch any of, of, because the commercial would actually function nicely.
Well, the, the reason planning did that and not another is because that applicant only had that particular piece of property. And with respect to the amount of parking, the parking for the commercial center still complies with the ordinance. More is always better. When, when you say they had the option of coming out to Cross Street, and now they'll all go onto Route Nine, the people that travel on Route Nine are going to hate that, the people who travel on Cross Street will probably like it.
Not really, because they're now they're getting 17, over, you know, probably 30 new residents that are going to be coming out of the ordinance now.
Well, they, apparently, and we haven't had a chance to hear from them yet, but apparently they're going to tell you they don't care if you do townhouses, just to prove what the ordinance says, and that's good for you guys, because then you're off the hook. And then we go to the Planning Board, and by right, they can get the 17 townhouse units.
The Planning Board may also consider it a, a, a...
The, the Planning Board has to follow the ordinance, the same as the zoning board follows the ordinance, but...
Does the Planning Board have to approve a private road?
The, there's nothing in the townhouse developments, and there's townhouse developments all through Lakewood that have been approved with private roads.
Who does apply on the private road?
The Homeowner Association.
Mr. Flannery, can you look at number, can you look at number?
Why did you create that open-out right by the...
In order to come in at a right angle, so that the cars aren't turned a little when they're coming in. Good, good traffic engineering says that when you're pulling onto a road, especially a county road, it needs, it should be at a right angle. And the county would never have approved it if we came out at an angle. This, this plan, if, if the Board acts favorably, needs to get approval from the County Planning Board, and the county engineer would never approve it unless it was at a right angle.
I understand that concept, but what's the, that now you have a blind spot, anybody coming in 200 feet later has no idea of the threat of mine back on that, so...
Well, the only way he has a blind spot, if there's another car there, and if there's another car there, he has to wait for it. Even in Lakewood, we have to wait for the car in front of us.
Most times they don't.
Brian, directly across the street, on the south side of Cross Street, is a development that's being built, over 80 townhouses. So the effect of that traffic has definitely, just east of that project, is a lot, commercial lot, and I believe this plans for a commercial building to be going in there. So this project will have to be approved by the county and the traffic.
Yes.
And taking all of that into consideration, I don't see how anyone living there would be traveling east on Cross Street will ever be able to get into the street. There's no way, and you're going to back up traffic on Cross Street to Jackson. It's that way now. I don't, I can't speak for the Planning Board, why they would do what they're doing, because traffic-wise, this isn't going to work at all.
Well, traffic-wise...
Will we answer the question? What year was that approved? That plan?
2015. So, traffic-wise, without improvements to the county roads, it's going to be a bad situation, which is what it is now. And the county engineer...
It's going to be worse.
Well, and 17 units would be worse than 14.
Because it's going to be 88 that you haven't accounted for that.
Well, and again, with, with 88 across the street, and they will be accounted for when we go for a county approval.
And you're saying 17, but you're saying basically it would be 34.
So, and, and that, that even makes it different. So now we're looking at 28 versus 34. So that's six additional units to do what's permitted by right, as opposed to what the applicant is requesting.
Flannery, the, of Mr. Flannery's review letter talks about lot sizes of the single-family houses, that there's no, single-family, there's no criteria for that, because single-family houses aren't allowed in HD zone.
Correct.
But then he says, that the general design standard for minimum lot area in the HD zone is 18. These are what, about 6,000, 7,000 square feet?
Yes.
Why wouldn't they be larger to try to get closer to what the HD zone, the 7 zone?
Well, the, my testimony has been that the special reason here is that the applicant is trying to do a development that incorporates singles and is better than townhouses. If the applicant was going to do 40,000 square foot lots for houses, nothing would be built here. The applicant is either going to build something less than the 17 townhouses that he's permitted to by right, or he's going to build 17 townhouses. And, and it's my testimony that the special reasons for the reasons I indicated, that the 14 units proposed is a better alternative than the 17 that's permitted by right for everybody involved.
Brian, I have a question. I have a question. Based, based on what you're telling me here today, everything is permitted use besides the single-family houses, right?
Duplexes and townhouses are permitted uses in the HD 7.
Your plan, if I were to take out the single families, your plan is permitted use?
Based on my interpretation of the ordinance.
Based on your...
Yes.
So why don't you just put in townhouses right in there and then call it a quit? Why are you, why are you here for a, a use variant, wasting my time?
Because the applicant thought it was worth wasting his money and your time to present an application that's clearly superior to what's permitted by rights. It doesn't, the reason the Boards are...
You're telling me that the applicant really cares? Superior to what's right? You're judging Lakewood?
Yes. The applicant...
He's had an election.
Be the first time.
I don't think those guys won.
Well, just because the people that are anti-development didn't win, doesn't mean that a builder who's lived in town for many years and has built many nice projects in town shouldn't continue to try to do nice projects. And certainly, the applicants, to a large part, have said, "Let's, let's not ask for any variances, because it's a fight to get the variances. Let's just go ahead and build what's permitted by right." This applicant chose not to follow that path. We had an application at the Planning Board where Mr. Krupnik came in and said, "I'd rather build 11 nice houses than 12." The Planning Board turned him down. Two months later, they approved 12 houses. So there's going to be 12 families there, one additional house, two if you count the basement, and the same situation is going to occur here. And, and everybody that's in this room that remembers, when they see 17 townhouses built there, 34 if you count the basements, is going to say, I, I think Brian was right in his testimony, that 14 would have been better. But if the Board is not inclined to grant any variances, even though that's the reason the Board is here, the Board is here per the municipal land use law to listen, and, and I can read through it again, what the municipal land use law says. I have to show you that there's special reasons. I have to show you that it can be granted without any detriment to the public good. And in my opinion, it's very easy to say there's no detriment to the public good when you can have 28 families instead of 34. It's easy for me to say it's not substantially detrimental to the master plan, because the master plan says you're allowed to have 17 units, 34 with the basements here, and the applicant's only putting 28. They're going to be nicer units, the families that live in them are going to be happier, and the impact on the surrounding. It's that simple. It's very simple to see. The application is very simple. I'm going through the report to give you the justification in, in the municipal land use law. law.
But, but, but I appreciate you teaching me the municipal land use law, which I haven't picked up in the past 15 years. But that's okay, thank you very much. But I, if you're a developer, you're building, you're deploying, so concerned of Lakefront aesthetic view, look, why does the, I would love to do eight single family houses on that strip too. That'd be beautiful.
Well, I, I would imagine, I would imagine that if there were eight single family houses, we would still have the neighbors objecting because they would say eight is too much.
Hey, if the objective of eight aren't taken on my, on my shoulders, I'll, I'll, I'll sue you.
Well, I, I, I think that, you know, we're going to have to go through this application. The applicant hopefully is watching it right now, thanks to Mr. Klein, who's live streaming this. Uh, and, and he can see the board's feelings, he can see what the neighbors say, and he's going to have a decision to make. And, and the decision is, you know, to continue with this application or to...
Look at your phone.
Right. Right. The zoning board has to make the decisions based upon the facts that we're working with. Not what the planning board's doing.
Now, the zoning board, uh, at...
What the planning board is doing is in their right, has no bearing on what we need.
That's correct.
Right.
What did you say? I didn't hear that.
That is correct. You're right.
Right.
I said, of course. But you're telling me about the planning board, we're interested in...
Well, I'm, I'm telling you about the planning board because that's the comparison. Here's, here's what the municipal land use law says. "In particular cases and for special reasons, grant a variance to allow departure from regulations pursuant to Chapter Eight of, of this act to permit use or principal structure in a district restricted against such use of principal structure." That's why we're here. So I have to show you there, this is a particular case and, and show you special reasons. I, I don't know how much more particular you could have in this, where you have a cul-de-sac that's going to come out there, already approved, you have a piece of property that's as unique as this, so I, there's no doubt in my mind that this is a particular case. I've never presented one like this before, I don't think I'll ever present one like this again. So now we get down to the special reasons. And the special reasons is that you're going to have less density and a nicer project. That's, that's the case. If the board disagrees, well, then that, you make the decision. That's why you guys get the big bucks.
One second. I'm sorry to interrupt you, it's nine o'clock. It's nine o'clock, and I have a couple of questions. Okay. I would usually think of breaking at nine o'clock, number one. Number two, this application, we're here, I already have 55 minutes. Here are my opening comments, 45 minutes of our application. I don't think I'm going to be finished right with this application the way you're going. I have a long agenda. Question is, I'd like to take a break and I'd like to continue your application next month.
Well, that'll be up to the applicant. I just want to clarify one thing. When I said you guys get the big bucks, it was a joke. I know you're all volunteers. I, I heard some noise from the, the public. Uh, you're all volunteers and, and everybody in Lakewood should be thankful for the time you put in. And I know you, you mostly only get abuse for it. Uh, but the applicant could make the determination...
Well, I, I, I'll tell you, I have three here, 10:15, and I have a long agenda. Are you ready to call at this point?
We're not, we're not going anywhere.
Or do you want to continue? That's what you said.
Should we listen to some of the...
We haven't, we haven't finished our direct.
Yeah, let's finish right.
Of course you're going to the first examination, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Attorney, you get, oh, I'm sorry. You're going to the first examination.
Correct. It's going to be, just go for another hour, another one hour and a half, so. And I have a long agenda that I have to move forward with. Uh, we have a rule in the books for a reason, correct? Guys, are you in favor or in agreement? What? Um, are you, are you in a position where you can stop right here?
I, I, I can stop wherever the chairman tells me to stop.
Mr. Pepper, would you agree that if we adjourn the meeting to the July meeting, adhering to the July meeting at the time period in which we have to, uh, any decisions called?
Yes, I agree that I would ask that we be first on the agenda. As all business continuing...
What's your July list?
Yeah, the fourth is Tuesday, and then the third is on a Monday, so that's, so that's following, that's following. Yeah, that's fine. First, the total, you're right, okay? Okay, nice.
All right. Then I'll leave, Jerry, we'll leave a motion to, with the understanding that the application time period is called. A motion to carry July end and, and, and publish it, so that we can...
Fine. So can I have a motion as per Jerry?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, 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 Brian, please make sure that we listen to the page immediately transferred before the meeting, so that we can sit down on it and sign the paperwork. Whoever wants to join me, has to, has to, okay, so can I have a motion as per, from Jerry?
I'll say it.
Motion, yes. How, who else?
I'll second it.
Second amendment, Rose, you have to say, roll over.
Mr. Gilli?
Yes.
Mr. House?
Yes.
Mr. Collin?
Yes.
Mr. Angel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Okay, so whoever's here for this application, please vote. That'll, it'll continue on July 10th, on Monday, July 10th. First one at seven o'clock. Thank you. Motion, please. Let me just check the... Yes, it's July 10th. Okay? Okay. So this is application, application 4007, our land group will continue on seven o'clock on July 10th. Thank you. When we come back, when we come back, we're going to go to Elliot's Capital, 4023. One 10th, Harvard Avenue.
Hold up. 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 Now that I want to do that, I want to live here.
So, of course. The answer to your question, how did we change the building, is we didn't change the building. They just told us we're doing a 10-foot inside unit, so, our coverage, we had to redesign the house, we figured in the 10 feet. We didn't redesign it, it's the same house we always had. We're just asking for...
Yeah, but we, if, if it's the same house, it's got to be wider.
No, this is what we asked for the first time.
Oh.
And they said, they didn't think that the architectural plan was complete enough that they can make a decision. So they said, well, to think back, if you had a better plan, maybe we'd improve the variances, but we'll approve 10 foot on both sides.
Okay.
And then, and then we would have had to redesign the house and comply with Terry.
So what we showed was insufficiently designed plans showing this seven and eight, and they gave us the 10.
Right, and it was...
And it was sort of like, if you want my father to come back?
Right, and there was some, there was...
And you can live with 10.
So there's something to every next block here. You never see the... Babe, babe, babe. All right. Sounds good. But we have this, we should not sever the... Yeah. Well, what, we don't quite, because... So, you need five members, so, your members, you need two kids. That's why.
Oh, that's, she couldn't find the fly. Which one is yours?
Mine. Great. This is more like, yeah, eight, nine, ten. Yeah, you're probably, you're probably going to be, you might be like the second one.
They don't care.
Good. That's good money. Good. That's like 30% more than we, than we, than we usually get on the money. Good. Okay. Very good. I just wanted to check. Okay. Mom brought home some Boston market, she was hungry, and I'm still, I'm still burping upstairs.
I'm at the zoning board. I told you that in the beginning. Usually, you know, so whether or not you're...
You're next.
I guess not.
No.
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 No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. No. She was hungry, and I'm still burping upstairs.
I know, they're invisible tonight. They're gonna be invisible. Just for housekeeping sake, I just want to go through a couple of...
That's true, I don't carry. Not here either. Yeah.
Go. Okay, are we ready? Okay. Just a little housekeeping. As I indicated before, I will... I have to leave at 10:15. Therefore, cut the night short for 45 minutes. And I'd like to go through the rest of the calendar and the weblogs table. If you do so at this time. If I leave, there's only going to be five members. So I don't think anyone wants to be heard on five members. So Elian Capital is coming up next. And then we're gonna have appeal number 4026, New York Avenue, Solomon Michael. I'll probably get to that one. Drink Development?
Yes, we'd like to carry it this time.
You want to carry it? Okay, without further notice, with a waiver of time?
That is correct.
Can I have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, appeal number 4027. If we carry for July 10. Renard Norman? Renard Norman here? 4028. I don't see him. Come back. KJ Investment, 742 Ocean Avenue?
Yes, we would like to carry.
You would like to carry that one as well?
To July 10, yes, please.
You'd like that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone that's...
Thank you.
...3971A, KJ Investment, that'll be heard on July 10. Uh, sure as a friend didn't notice properly. And Gerald Posen, 4031, 45 Sunset Road?
I doubt we get to us this evening, so we'd like to carry.
You're gonna carry it as well? Okay, so anyone... Anyone all in favor, 4031, for Gerald Posen to carry? July 10. All in favor? Okay, anyone that's here for 4031, Gerald Posen? Uh, it'll be heard on July 10.
And that's no further notice?
No further notice.
Nope, yeah, without further notice, a waiver of time, all of them.
Correct.
So we're back to Renard Norman. Is Renard Norman here?
Brian? Warman wants to continue tonight, right?
Yes.
Warman wants to try to...
They'd like to try to be good.
Without leaving a 10 feet sharp?
Yes.
Okay.
Hopefully we'll allow all of them to provide.
All of them just carry?
Well, the ones who didn't care.
Oh, okay. Okay. Moving forward. Elian Capital, 110 East Harvard Avenue, Brandon, do you have the record?
The applicant calls for construction of a new residential dwelling or streetcar and other amenities. The applicant's obtained both family's relief with number 3988, including but not limited to the appropriate cover's relief. The applicant is requesting both family's relief for the whole side yard setback, 7 feet proposed, 10 feet previously permitted, and aggregate side yard setback, 15 feet proposed, 23 feet previously permitted.
Mr. Chairman, John Doyle, on behalf of the applicant, I'm pleased and privileged to represent Elian Capital, but more specifically, Yona Weiss, and through him, his family, who would intend to live here. This is an application that you had previously granted in terms of several of the variances that were granted at that time, more specifically and importantly, the 7,500 square foot lot. But as you will look at what's been marked A3, all of the blue that you see like a C across that map is undersized lots. All of... And basically, R7.5s as our width. The yellow represents uses of multifamily that are not permitted in the zone. So we are a permitted use on a lot for a single-family... For a residence that is consistent with the size of just about every lot in the basic neighborhood of which we're a part. With that introduction, and you in approving it, and I wasn't here at the time, it was my understanding, the plans perhaps weren't as specific and as defined as the board would like. We think we've corrected that mistake, and so we come to you to be able to build and allow the family to be housed in a 35-foot wide, typical house, and we have specific plans to show that. That would allow for sufficient side setbacks of 7 and 8 feet and a total of 15 feet, which are consistent with the R7.5 zone, which is, for all intents and purposes, what this area is, even if it isn't quite zoned that way. Mr. Lyons?
Lyons, would you raise your right hand, sir? Do you swear or affirm that you're the hold for it to Elian Capital?
I do. Glenn Lyons, Lakewood, New Jersey, professional engineer, professional plan.
And in that capacity, your expertise and knowledge in those areas has been recognized by this board hundreds of times, if not more often.
Yes, I have.
You heard my introductory remarks. I wasn't under oath, you were. Was I accurate?
Yes, you were.
Okay. Would you describe the house as it is intended and part of this application, which is shown as A1?
It's a single-family house with five bedrooms. It does have a... An access on the west side, which would be for a basement apartment. On the prior plan, when we heard last time, it was very unclear exactly how the entrance to the basement apartment would work. And the board was very gracious in giving us the 10-foot side yard setbacks. But we resubmitted the plan, which is... Just to have on the board as A2, which shows on the... Facing the house on the right side, there's a side entrance which goes down to the basement, and that door is at grade level. On the prior plan, it wasn't clear whether it was a grade level or whether it was a structure on the side of the house. It was very difficult. The board didn't understand.
The prior house was a duplex, wasn't it?
No, so it's been a single family. Single family with basement apartment, yes. So that... And the house hasn't changed, other than we've gotten a much better architectural plan for you to see, to see that, you know, the... Again, the entrance on the right side of the house is at grade, a single door going down to a basement. Only one door, no two doors, no outside stairs to, you know, an attic apartment or anything. You know, the applicant intends to live in the house. It's gonna be his house with one basement apartment possible.
It says, "Don't finish the basement."
Well, he's not... He's not finishing it now, but we're asking. But if we don't ask for a basement apartment now, then we have to come back to you and ask for a basement apartment. Right. He... They did not draw up plans to finish the basement.
I mentioned A3. Describe that more specifically, the blues and the yellows.
Yes, this is the area that goes basically from the railroad tracks, the East End Avenue. It's listed in the master plan as an R10, and they've recommended be R7.5. I've outlined all the lots in blue that are R7.5, either single-family or duplexes across the street from our lot on East Harvard. There are two 7,500 square foot, single-family houses, and then there are three duplexes in between on 10,000 square foot lots with 7.3-foot side yard setbacks, so they comply with the R7.5 zone. And most of the other lots in blue, many of them are single-family houses on 7,500 square foot lots. So this neighborhood really developed as 7... An R7.5.
They're coming down then previously. So they see here, we approved last time 30%?
Correct.
Or you approved 32.68%?
No, no, you approved... You approved 32.68%.
What are you doing now?
32.68%.
Leaving it?
Yes.
We approved minimum side yard, 15 feet.
No, you approved...
It says over here, zoning order granted on the 388, 15 feet side yard setbacks.
No.
No. You approved under... In the letter, in the RVV letter, it says required. It said 10 and 20, and then it says permitted with three asterisks, which was relief... Variance relief previously granted and it gave appeal numbers. We're requesting 7 feet with a combined total of 15 feet, which is the R7.5 standards.
And required would be 10 and 20.
And the required in the zone is 10 and 25. But you've already permit... You've already approved 10 and 20. 10 on each side, basically.
Okay, so now you need 3 more feet?
We're asking for five more... Five more feet total.
Okay.
So we would go to... Instead of 10, we'd have 7, and instead of 20, we would have 15. Everything else on the application is either existing or approved.
Going to the statutory standard, does this, in your judgment as a planner, is there either A hardship, or B, special reasons in that this is more appropriately approved this way than the existing zone?
I believe it's a special reasons. It's really, in keeping with the zoning in the neighborhood, as we've shown on A3, the zonings really are 7.5. We're on a 50-foot lot. The lot next to us is a 50-foot lot. The next lot's a 50-foot lot.
The lots behind us are 50?
The lots behind us are all 50 feet.
And the house is all of... Oh, what you just mentioned is what, another lot?
They're all existing, single-family, some...
Small little bungalows?
There's a few there. There's... There's the lot next door to ours is a small little bungalow. The one next to that is...
It's a big bungalow.
A larger bungalow, yes.
Which has... And behind us is a combination of new homes, which have been granted variances, so they're... They have the 7 and 15s. Right. And then there's duplexes thrown in that also have, you know, 7 to 8 foot sizes.
So basically, all you want here is... He wants to also have a bigger one, don't he, Grant, in the last one? Bring it back to the application.
No, it's the same... It's the same square footage, because the lot coverage is the same. We just want to make it 5 feet... Instead of a 30-foot wide house, he's requesting a 35-foot wide house.
Instead of 30... Whatever, you mean the 32 with a little shallow?
Correct. But the 35 with the 7 and 8 is more in keeping with the neighborhood of an R7.5 zone than...
That is what he wants to build this house, you know? I really don't care. If that's what the length of the avenue is, you'd like it that way.
It just didn't work for it. It was difficult to work out the interior, as far as I understand.
Yeah, I understand that, but we have to make sure that there's only one apartment based on the attic apartment. I think that's what last time, we made it that way. And I hope I'm not gonna be rude at all.
And we don't expect the board to change its views, and we're not trying to convince them on that to change their views.
Okay. Does anyone here in the public hearing have any...
Yeah, just a question. You mentioned all the other houses, which are the same 50-foot wide lots. What are their side setbacks?
Just that of the bungalows?
The existing... As the chairman referred to them as bungalows, they may be less or more, but they're in need of rehabilitation.
What about the new houses?
The new houses? I looked up several... Several of them, we've done the plot plans and the variance applications for them. They are R7.5... They use the R7.5 standards. The 7 and 15. 7, 7 single, 15 combined. So they said, the duplex across the street is at 7 and... 7.3 on each side, which is just slightly over the 7-foot minimum required.
We're in the unusual position, if we conform to the orders, we would be inconsistent, because the whole area is...
Are we gonna have stairs going up to the attic from here? Is that what this...
No outside stairs.
No.
I know there are, but the stairs right here on the side, so this go all the way up into the attic? If not, we want to terminate on the second floor and give a staircase to the attic, which is on the second floor, not near continuous... Not continuous from the regular stairwell, the outside door.
No, the outside door is not connected to the first floor. There is no doorway between the outside stair and the basement and its interior stairwells of the house. The interior stairwell of the house, there's no... There's no connecting...
The door, I didn't say the door. I said door.
No, that's the door from the outside. There's no connecting door between the basement's... Sorry. There's no connecting door between the basement entrance and the interior stairway shown on the plan.
Hold on, I'm lost. I'm totally lost. First floor plan, I see here a set of stairs going up and down, down to the basement and up to the... Up to the... To the second floor.
Correct. Down to the basement, that the owner would have access to a piece of the basement of their own.
But I see an outside door.
Which would go down to a...
To the basement.
Correct. But it doesn't connect to the first... To the stairway going to the first floor.
I see it does. It's open right up to the first floor. Am I not seeing this right?
No, that's the little graphic representation of the doorway that opens into the basement entrance.
Hold on.
That is a solid...
Hold on. Can I explain?
Can I come up and show you, sir?
Yeah. Can you come here a minute?
Yes.
Explain this to me. Here's a door, right? You come inside over here, you go down to the basement. You come inside over here, and you go upstairs. Can you continue?
Well, let me bring up the plan that I have.
Does the rooms have plans?
Somewhere, I believe. That's why I was thinking. These stairs do not connect to the basement. These stairs do not connect to the basement.
Mr. Lyons, keep your voice up, please.
The basement has its own entrance on the side of the building, which goes down stairs.
Hold on. This is the stairs to the basement?
Yes.
And this is just internally? There's no door here?
There's no door.
And this cement pad out here is for what? Why does this big cement pad? Is this not an molding? This portion of this pad?
That should be a side of the pad. Right, but we can make that smaller.
Okay. So you're telling me... You're telling me that this is... I don't see stairs here, that's right.
That's correct.
Okay. So, okay, this is downstairs. This is the inside of the house. This is the up. This is up, right? So there's one exactly this way here?
That's a window on the...
And here? So this right here, what is this? That's an outside... Do we look at like an outside on...
Covering or something? No. It's a...
Oh, that's the window.
It's a handrail on the window.
Oh, that's the window. Which covers over here. So these stairs, these doors only downstairs?
Only downstairs.
What's he gonna take the pump, open another door here, or make another stairs over here? Later on? So, my... All I'm trying to say is stairs to the attic should... The stairwell should terminate on the second floor, and if need, stairs to the attic, put it somewhere in the middle of the floor. That's all I'm trying to say.
Sure, that's it.
Mr. Lyons, you know, with the records, please. The variance plan you're referring to has a last revision date of May 16, 17. We owe apples to apples here.
We have... I have the wrong one.
The 373... What is the engineering plan?
I have one, May 16, 2017, signed by Glenn Horn.
I have May 17, 2017.
I'm sure we adjusted one or two of the comments in the prior letter.
Well, I understand that. But is that what you have up there? It's May 16, 2017?
No, I have the prior... You have a more... You have a more current plan than I do. I printed the wrong one out of the computer before I came to the meeting tonight. That was my mistake. The one you have is more current than mine.
No.
The engineering... We're talking about... Excuse me. Mr. DeSas is talking about the engineering plan.
What do you have that? What's your... What's your group's data now?
No, no, that's a different...
62916 is the architectural plan.
This is about 106 feet. Architectural.
That's older.
What are we going to do?
I don't... I don't... I didn't print it. I printed this out, I was handing this to the office. I have the current plan.
Yes. The zoning board likes to make the house work. I don't want to... I come up to the... And he has it older. This has only 121. So this car show basis up in there, or... Doesn't this... This shows up... He showed me now. And this proceeds that one that is... So which is my one?
If I might be... The plan that was submitted, that the engineer ordered...
the, 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 the,[723.13]
I think this application, these type of applications, that somebody is coming in and wants to build a bigger house, even though he's a guy from Brooklyn, he looks like a guy from Brooklyn. He's Hasidic. And at four minutes. He is, actually, this development that he is basically building his house is mostly Hasidic neighborhood. I'm putting it more in Yiddish language, that the attorneys are saying similar houses over there have the same setbacks and the same type of zoning variances. I'll put it in a different language, that because that neighborhood has the Hasidic residents of Brooklyn mainly residing over there, they like actually living like this, one on top of each other. So, again, I can't, obviously, there's no neighbors objecting over here because that's the way they like living. So, in this circumstances, I think the zoning board, this is what they're made for, in approving this type of applications, even though the applicant is not related to the Vaad. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing number close to the public. Motion, approval or denial or comments? Whatever you guys want to do. What?
By way of clause, I would say that we would ask you to approve it based upon the neighborhood, the conditions, and the rehabilitation that has taken place. This is a vacant lot. The other houses are likely to come down. The houses that came down across the street are attractive with the same setbacks. What we did talk about, and the chairman made very clear, and I responded very clearly, is an approval would come with that condition.
Thank you, Josh.
Okay. Anyone want to say something or give me a motion?
I make motion to approve with the condition, standard condition, which is the stucco and the stuckle location and the stone. That the building was strictly, yeah.
Stones.
And one third of the, uh...
Brick stone or, or, uh...
Stone, right.
Stucco.
Yeah.
And also the stairs in the house, not which way the other way.
Yes.
Okay, you have a motion outside.
I have a motion, a motion, excuse me. I have a motion, a motion, for second by Mayor, uh, Mayor Kelly. May I have a second here, roll call, please?
Kelly?
Yes.
The House.
Yes.
Mr. Natale.
Yes.
The Inver, the Rose.
No. Yes. Good night and good luck.
And to you too.
Uh, forward appeal number four zero two six, Solomon Michael. Four zero two six. New York Avenue. There's a no. Row six. Five yeses.
Five yeses.
There's a no. Okay, Brian?
Brian going to read it, or are we, uh...
Brian, let me see. Nothing personal. Make sure everything is ordered. But I see you line up. Program, man.
New York Avenue, lot two twenty-four, that's been a one-term, two-term, ten-zone, construction single-family home, and just a setback guarantee and lockup. From Terry Bowe Avenue, to Seagull, to the move, and it's a green valley, and a progress of our property, and it's got two, two-story, single, two, two-story, single-family dwelling, two basements, and the avenue, the Seagull, and the side yard, aggregate side yard, and building cover.
Okay, go ahead, Brian.
Waiting for Jerry.
So do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
I do. Brian Flonery Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. This application is very simple. There's two existing lots. The applicant is looking to put two single-family homes on a lot, typical Lakewood single-family homes. Uh, the plans don't necessarily show all the Lakewood zoning board criteria, but the applicant will agree to the Lakewood zoning board criteria in reference to them. The, this property is in the R-ten zone. I have, A-one is a map of the area showing in orange where the subject property is located, and A-two is the map that submitted. The first thing I'd like to, uh, read to the board, because these are bulk variances we're looking for, basically asking for lots in accordance with the R-seven-five criteria, based on the lots that are there. Uh, and the master plan of two thousand and seven, on page seventy-four, indicated rezone both of the R-ten zones east of the downtown area to R-seven-five, single-family residential, to provide housing opportunities compatible with redevelopment of that area. Uh, that's what we're asking to do. We're asking for, by right, we could build twenty-five-foot wide houses there, which would not be in accordance with the neighborhood. The thirty-five-foot wide houses we're proposing will fit in well with the neighborhood. We've notified everybody within two hundred feet, uh, just as the last application. Uh, I'm assuming that Mr. Klein will get up afterwards and indicate, uh, that in this area it's compatible and, um, uh, but, uh, continuing through the master plan, we have on page thirty-five of the two thousand and seven master plan housing, uh, there's been tremendous residential growth, and the conclusion is, uh, for all this growth, not all of Lakewood's housing needs are met. Uh, on page fifty-six, it says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. This is in the, on the smart growth plan in the downtown regional center, which says an area of commercial surrounded by high to medium desert residential density. This all fits in with that, uh, under the municipal land use law, NJAC forty colon fifty-five D-two. The purpose of the act, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which promote public health, safety morals, and general welfare. It's my testimony that this does that. Uh, E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities, and, and since we're consistent with the master plan, this does that. This is similar to the area, uh, on North Oakland, uh, where it's been redeveloping with duplexes. In this particular case, it's redeveloping with, uh, single families, which will provide needed housing opportunities, uh, and the benefits will certainly outweigh any detriment. And if we look at, certainly, it's unique in that they're existing lots. Uh, if we look at the detriment, uh, it's my opinion, there is no detriment. Somebody could put these together and put a duplex on it, and we'd have the same number of units, the same number of people. This is going to be nicer units, compatible. There are a lot of the fifty-foot wide lots in this area, which is why in two thousand and seven, the planning board said it, it should be rezoned to R-seven-five. If that had been done, we wouldn't be here. We would have submitted building permits to Ms. Siegel and...
Brian, two questions. Right now, it's one or two lots?
It's two lots.
And there's a house on each lot right now?
There's only one house.
On which lot?
Right. On the right one. Oh, yeah. Mr. Mickel is the applicant. He, he could be sworn there.
Mr. Mickel, would you raise your right hand, sir? Do you affirm to tell the whole truth?
Yes.
Yeah, you have to speak into the mic, and Mr. Klein will tell you it's directional, so you have to have it pointed right at you.
Okay. Uh, Brian, as we discussed earlier today, again, uh, we had a house that was a duplex, a thirty, a thirty, thirty-one point three percent wide. Here we have thirty-five feet wide. Why can't we make the house a little narrower so we can come in more, more, you know, the side effects effect?
Well, if, if you look at the conformity of the area, and...
Extremely dense. Yeah, right. Extremely dense.
Well, it, and, and if you make it twenty-five feet wide and deeper, you didn't accomplish anything.
But why don't we get, you know, we have, we have to be, uh, contract...
Well, it's, we started with what the planning board recommended, which was R-seven-five. I always defer to the wisdom of, of the board.
What?
I always defer to the wisdom of the board.
I know that. So if you defer to the wisdom of the board, uh, you should, I, I, you know, I hope you learned over the years the wisdom of the board.
Well, it, we, we've had other applications in the North Oakland and Cherry area where the, the, the planning board said it should be R-seven-five, and applications...
I'm not working on that point.
And, and beautiful development has occurred. We're trying to do the same thing here. You're telling me fifteen-foot combined setback's not enough? Uh, if, if we did on, eight on each side, uh, that, that would take, uh, and, you know, we could take a couple feet off the...
So, so, so let's talk about New York Avenue for a minute, between Ridge and E-seven Street, how narrow it is, and how congested that block is versus Oakland, Oakland and Cherry Street, which is basically the homeowner there has revitalized the whole entire block from one end to the other, and cleaning it all up. But here, the area is more or less all cleaned up already. You know, you have a pocket here and a pocket there, so therefore, if we have a pocket there, pocket there, let's keep it within, within somewhat the zone standard that you yourself are trying to fly through.
Well, it, it would be within the R-seven-five zone standards, and it, it would be consistent with, with the area, because there are other fifty-foot wide lots that have thirty-two to thirty-five-foot wide houses.
Thirty-five, I don't think so.
Uh, well, it, so I, I, I'm already saying the...
I, 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 I know, I, I, I know the neighborhood.
I, I, I'm already saying the, the act, well, we're going to have the same number of people, the same size building. We're just asking to make it a little wider than would be permitted by right, so that the family that lives in there can, uh, have, uh, can get normal...
Next to your, your, your text back for a moment, because I don't have it here. And basically, make a look at it. You will see yourself, oh, I have it right here, I'm sorry. Do you have it? That probably won't be clear. Take a look at it. People owned right by Dina Place, down the block, right around the corner. Now, next to you, it's all spread out. Dina should be right here. You're right here, New York Avenue, right here. Shana, Dina, all this is, is, is single-family here. And here, Ridge Avenue, Shiva over here. These are nice, um, houses here. My name is here. I don't remember. But, you know. Make it a, just somewhat, make it a little narrower.
Now or longer? You have it not, not moving back.
But the, the applicant, uh, is willing to make it somewhat narrow. We asked for thirty-five. If the board says thirty-two is a better number, we'll, we'll ask for thirty-two, and, and we'll have to rework the architecture, and we would have one-third, uh, architectural upgrade on the front and the landscape. Thirty, thirty-two gives you another three feet, so instead of fifteen, you have eighteen.
Nine and nine. Yeah. I, I mean, that, that block, it looks so congested, it looks so, but the French, horrible. You can't move there. So we want to just make a little space, a little bit, a little...
Thirty-two feet wide, I think.
A little bit of space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone in the public want to be heard on this appeal?
Yes, sir. Would you raise your right hand, sir? Do you affirm to tell the whole truth, sir? We got it.
I affirm.
Would you give us your full name and spell your last, and talk into the microphone, please?
Avraham Rich, R-I-C-H-T. Nine New York Avenue. I'm a next-door neighbor, and I'm concerned that if the house is going to be seven feet wide, with the windows facing my windows, be uncomfortable for our privacy.
Does it make that much of a difference?
It's better than seven.
How?
Brian, can you move the windows that it doesn't line up for this?
Well, the applicant has said he would go, the applicant has said he would go to, to thirty-two-foot wide house. We put ten to the neighbor who, who wants what it is, uh, what he would get by ordinance, uh, and, and, uh, the other side would be eight.
Just what I want, ten, nine, nine, ten. What, what is your side setback? What is your side setback?
We have, uh, I think seven, I'm at a hundred and seven.
Ten, nine, nine, ten. What?
We don't have any windows lined up, uh, next door. It's a whole different setup.
I, I would go ten, ten, nine, nine, ten. What?
How far is your house? Is your line?
I think seven, but the windows, it's a bother to me more than the space, the windows.
And, and the applicant...
I'm open to that.
The applicant would certainly meet with the neighbor and make sure the windows don't line up. It's in his best interest as well.
I, I, I...
Just ten, nine, nine, ten. Okay, anyone else in the public want to be heard? Are you done? Want to say something else?
Affirm, tell the whole truth, sir? We got it.
Affirm. Again, the neighbor getting up and complaining about a setback that he has the same setback and the other guy shouldn't have, I don't know. You know, that's not, uh, doesn't sound right. I, you know, he doesn't want the windows lined up is one thing, but the complaint on the setback that he has, the other guy shouldn't have, it's like, but, I would like to know, this neighborhood is a neighborhood that the Hasidim from Brooklyn are taking over, or this is for the Yeshiva people? I'll tell you what the difference is. The pe, the, the applicant was here before. He is a guy from Brooklyn. He wants a big house. He wants to build on his lot, a lot, and he wants to live over there. But I don't know the reason for you building this house, if it's for, we need more housing. What we need is more affordable housing. So if it's for the guys from Brooklyn, they don't like affordable housing. But if you, if this neighborhood is a Yeshiva neighborhood, we need more smaller houses that it shouldn't be so expensive, and that will comply with, Brian's always, we need more housing compliance. But again, I see a guy over here, I'm afraid to object to his application. He looks like a nice guy, so I don't know what his purpose. It doesn't look like he's a Vaad affiliated, so obviously, he doesn't have that influence, so I'm just pointing out points. Thank you.
Does that mean you're in favor of the applicant?
That means I'm not objecting.
Okay. Anyone else?
One more gentleman. Sorry, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth?
I affirm.
Could you give us your full name and spell your last?
Aaron Hirsch, H-I-R-S-C-H.
Thank you.
One forty-sixth mile view. Chestnut. Um, I would just, I, not really, of course, I was brought up in this application. I'd like to set the record straight. Um, it keeps being brought up that there's a housing shortage in Lakewood, even though every single new neighborhood keeps being not marketed to Lakewood people. They keep saying we have a shortage, and I'll explain to you how, how bad the twisted logic has gotten. I was last week at the county. Someone actually called up the county commissioner and said, "We have a housing crisis. We'd like to solve for our children. I would like to buy the Ocean County Park, six hundred acres, to solve our problem." This is, how crazy it's gotten. He was serious about it. So really, we gotta, we, if we're going to start saying there's a housing crisis, we need to get studies that show how many people on these new places that are being approved are really from Lakewood. They keep saying, "We need it," instead of, they don't even market it to us, and they're just trying, charging higher numbers for Brooklyn. And it really, I think it's time that we need to reexamine this. When we need more housing, they're just giving us lots of traffic, and it's getting worse. And I heard it before also, people, it, it's Take Back Lakewood, he quotes, "I speak, I just ran for elections. I spoke to a ton of people. People are seriously angry at the way this town has been developed." I got a lot of votes from people that were, I got basically double of what other committee men got in regular elections. But the point, my point of getting at is, I've met tons of people. They are genuinely angry. For someone that used to live in Lakewood and ran out because he didn't like it, or whatever it is, don't talk for us. Let the people of Lakewood speak. It's not what we want, and I can assure you, many, many thousands of people in this town do not want this overcrowding. I'm not saying about this particular application, just saying in general, this, this attitude has got to change. Stop throwing things down our throat that we are not asking for.
I want a question for you.
Yes.
When did you move to Chestnut?
Um, four, four years ago.
And where we lived before that?
I live in Flappish.
Oh, so you came from Flappish four years ago to Lakewood?
Yes, I, in an existing home.
You were New York guys that came to Lakewood?
I have, my family's been there all, all our life, yes. And I, I moved into an existing home. I have a hundred and twenty wide. I didn't do that craziness. I, I, I came, I came to live, yes, I came to live, and I chose to live this life, not to get squashed and by every, and also, they, they lock us in like little, like animals, you know, like we can't move. So I appreciate if we could just, really, if we're going to testify under oath, we should really be using real acronyms. Let's do it, let's do it study then next time. Before we start bringing up, we need more, that's, let's actually do a study, how many people actually buying these new houses are actually local.
Go back to Flappish, and you guys, your neighborhood, and stop...
Well, that's what, oh, no, 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 they're not going to Flappish. They're going, they're targeting, I could, I could tell you later. It's not, it's, it's Williamsburg. It's go, they're pulling different neighborhoods.
Okay. Public cloud. Anyone else in the public? Seeing number close to the public.
The applicant has asked, you said ten, nine, nine, and ten. It, it would make a difference, somebody could go ten, eight, eight, and ten. Eight is more than the neighbor had, and that's only to the houses. The outside houses will get the ten each. He, he would have the availability of putting a duplex, which would be ten from each of them either. This would be nicer, and he would appreciate the extra part.
When we do ten, eight, eight, what's the width of the house?
Uh, it's late. Uh, thirty, thirty-two.
So ten, nine, nine, would be thirty-one?
Yes.
Can I speak?
No. Uh, we can send a message to Brian. Okay, you guys, you heard what Brian had just said? Um, you guys, if you guys do what you want to do, add a motion or, or...
Probably two to seven. I won't object to this. We don't want to...
Brian, I have a question.
Just make sure the windows next to them. On a second floor, is there, I, I, I don't like it. Is there any way that balcony would be eliminated? And I'm sure, I'm almost like balcony, it seems like you can easily push one, well, that's towards the back, because that balcony now is, is protruding another six, five feet, four feet, whatever it is, and again, it starts to look quite...
Yes.
Now, one's on the side. The side of the house, the second floor.
Can't have a protruding on the side.
So the house, house would be...
Yeah, that can be one side.
The, the applicant will agree to move it to the back, and, and the, what the neighbor indicated to me is that he's really more interested in shifting the windows, and the applicant would agree to meet with the neighbor and make sure the windows don't line up, because he doesn't want the windows lining up either. So the, the neighbor who, who spoke is, is not opposed to the seven-foot setback. He, he's opposed to windows not lining up, which the applicant is...
Yeah, but we have a problem with, or...
Uh, yeah, the, the issue that you raised, yes, we will change that, and there will be no balconies protruding to the neighbor.
Yeah, but eliminate that.
Yes.
He couldn't, he could do one on top of this.
Yes. Yes.
In the back.
In the back, yes.
And, and the steps also look like they're coming into the sides, to the second floor.
Okay.
Yeah. Stuff coming in and out of it.
And, and, and all of that, he's happy to change.
So we'll terminate this on the second floor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, all, all the standard conditions, and since the, the neighbor said seven's good, if the board could go for seven, that would be appreciated as well.
So I think we should do ten, eight, eight, ten, nine, ten. The windows should not be lined up, no protruding approaches on the second floor of the side. And it would be a third, third stone. No detaching sets in the attic, and I'll make a motion to...
Okay, so I have a motion from, I have a motion from Mayor Kelly. You can have a second on that one? Oh, second. Who was that? Uh, it's a second, may I have a second there? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gilli.
Yes.
And Alvis.
Yes.
And I'm Tyler.
Yes.
Mr. Engle.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
Yeah.
And Mr. Alvis.
Yes. Good night and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, it's almost ten after ten. I, nothing would have stopped in the next application, so can I have a motion? Yes.
I was here today in the morning. Uh, we had to meet with Count Edison. Seems like they got the numbers mixed. I was there today in the morning. I had to meet with Count Edison. They got the numbers mixed up. They had three people on, on nine, New York. He was there also. It was a mix-up, possibly. Uh, I met the neighbor on the other side also. Met him, and I met the neighbor on the other side. The other side asked me the same thing. I should please make the windows not line up. I told him, we'll take care of it.
Okay.
You don't have any problems. He also says he has no problem with that. If I, so maybe...
So you want to line up the window?
Right, but the thirty-five, that's, uh...
Done, right. Okay.
What'd he say?
So what are you trying to say? Thirty-five, go on, thirty-five. Go on, thirty-five.
If they both agree...
That page is open, close.
Thank you.
The fact thirty-two. Okay? Okay. Um, Mr., Mr. Mormon? Yes. Bernard Mormon, I have to leave.
We can do this real quick.
What?
We can do this real quick.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be in China next month, so I can't be here.
I really do, man, you okay?
We did it really quickly.
What?
We did it really quick.
You're not seeing us quick in, in, in this line.
Yeah, you don't like... And you need to work this line in four minutes. You have to go right here.
I'm very, I'm very sorry, yeah.
You don't want to be first.
Okay.[1689.24]